Jimenez.
Present.
Corales. Cohen.
Here.
Carrasco.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Sparza. Arenas. Foley.
Here.
Mahan. Jones.
Present.
Licardo.
Present.
We're at quorum.
Okay, thank you. We left off on the proposed ballot measure on the charter amendment. We have just completed public comment, but we come back to the council for discussion and for a motion. So, looking for any raised hands. Except, I think.
Mayor, I'm online and have a raised hand.
Oh, forgive me, I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez, my apologies.
No, thank you, I assume you were, I can't see you in the chambers, but I assume you were looking around to figure out.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was fumbling with the Zoom.
Okay, well, you know, in order to move us along, I'll make a motion. Okay, let's see if I can capture this, it's to accept the memo that Councilmember Cohen Foley and I put together, which is essentially the option one presented by, from staff with the creation of new section 608 in the charter. And that's also including the language from the city attorney that says, "As permitted by law," inserted into the language. And it is excluding the, the land acknowledgement that seems to, you know, there seems to be some controversy or some, some disagreement about. So, that's the motion.
Second.
All right, motion and second, I'll support that motion. Councilmember Foley, and then we'll go to Davis.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I just had a question about putting this on the ballot. Is, so the motion we make today will authorize you to put it on the ballot, and then you'll come back with the language later, is that correct? No, that is not correct. You already have the language, you need to proceed. Michelle shaking her head.
Yes, Councilmember Foley, today's action will authorize us to, and authorize the city clerk to take all necessary steps to place this on the November ballot. The language with the amendments proposed in the motion would give us the ballot measure language.
Okay, thank you. And how, this is a lot of information that will be in the ballot, and when we're limited to, what is it, 150 words? How will we make this as clear as possible without having several ballot measures which would increase the cost? So, is it possible to put them all together and get our point across as what we're trying to do?
Yes, so we've tried to write the ballot measure as clearly and consistently as possible with very direct language about each of the items that would be amended in the charter. And then, we will post information on the city's website that has the more detailed information. So, in the staff report, we discuss, you know, how we would post the arguments in favor and the city attorney's analysis, their independent analysis that, that they do. But then, the actual charter language also gets posted as it's posted for the agenda item today.
Okay, great, thank you very much. That's the only question I have, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Davis, it appears you're muted right now.
Sorry about that, thank you. I have a concern about removing the requirements for the planning and civil service commissions, as well as the, I believe the Fair Campaigns and Political Practices Commission also has a requirement that the members need to be a citizen or a qualified elector. And I have a concern about putting that together with all of these other items. And I'm wondering if the makers of the motion would be willing to bifurcate into two separate items for the ballot, that, that issue. And then, and I'm very supportive of removing the gender-specific language, adopting the equity language that Jimenez, Cohen, and Foley have put forward. I'm, I'm very supportive of those. I'm very concerned about removing the citizenship requirement, and I want to, I, I know that there are many people in, in our city who, who are very concerned about that discussion that we've been having. And so, I, I have a suspicion that there will be people willing to frankly vote against this entire measure just for that reason. So, I'm thinking it might be best to separate them out.
Well, I would just say that I, I see those two issues as uniquely different. You know, taking up the issue of allowing non-citizens to vote, and this issue of allowing non-citizens to participate in the day-to-day workings of the city via commissions, or committees, or commissions, I should say. And so, I'm not inclined to accept that. And I'd really like to hear from other colleagues and see if it's the will of the majority of the council to move this forward. So, I'll decline at the moment.
Okay, I, I would put forward that the Planning and the Civil Service Commission, and the Fair Campaigns and Political Practices Commission in particular, have quasi-judicial powers, and, and are powers over, over citizens. And that may not go, go over very well to remove a citizenship requirement for those commissions. The salary-setting commission would, I think, impacts only the council, and so I have less of a concern about that. Although, I would say, just personally, if that was made up of a majority of people who were not qualified citizens to, to vote, I would, I would have a problem with that. So, I think it's probably just easiest to have all four of those together and to ask the question whether or not we should remove that citizenship requirement. Again, because it's a quasi-judicial, these are quasi-judicial commissions, and they are very different from, say, the Parks Commission or even the Historic Landmarks Commission. And there are things that cannot even be appealed to the city council that go through the Planning Commission. So, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I don't think I'll be able to support it if it's not bifurcated.
Okay, are there comments from the council? Not seeing any hands. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, I guess I'll just respond to that, and I agree with Councilmember Jimenez that these are two issues that I think may actually, people might conflate, but they, that we, it'll be incumbent upon us to make sure people understand the significant difference between voting rights for non-citizens and their participation in this process. And I, I see this as a very small issue in the sense that it's, it's a very, it'll probably still be a rare instance in which an individual who's a non-citizen gets appointed, but this provides an opportunity for them to serve an important leadership capacity in the city in making decisions that affect them. So, I think it's a reasonable approach to leave it all together. I wouldn't want to spend an extra half a million dollars to separate these two items. If we do our job correctly in explaining this to people, they'll understand that there is a difference between these two things, and that the majority of commissioners will continue to be as they are now, and that there will be an opportunity for some folks who may be from a different subset of our community to participate in commissions. So, I'd like, I want to keep it together. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I agree with Councilmembers Cohen and Jimenez. We have many non-cis and, tens of thousands of non-cis and residents in our city, many of whom have been living here for decades, and they deserve to have a role. And if they should choose to participate, we should welcome them. All right, are there any other comments or questions? All right, let's vote then on the motion.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Corales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco.
Aye.
Davis.
No.
Sparza. Arenas. Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Licardo.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Our next item is item 3.8, which is the renewal of the downtown P-Bid. There was a public hearing last week. I think we're going to have a report out from the clerk about the vote tabulation, is that right?
Yes, hi, this is Tony Tabor, city clerk. I also submitted a supplemental memo with the count on it so people could see that ahead of time, but I'm just going to go ahead and read it. Actually, I'm not seeing it. Hold on just a second. But, we did get enough votes to go forward, it was over a million. I'm sorry, it wasn't attached, so it's just taking me an extra second to pull it up.
Okay.
Property owners with a total of 1,287,485,000 votes have returned ballots in support of the levy. Property owners with a total of 164,729 votes have returned ballots in opposition of the levy. Ballots submitted by property owners in the downtown San Jose Property-Based Business Improvement District in support of the levy of assessments exceeds the ballots submitted in opposition. Therefore, the city council may proceed to vote on imposition of the assessment.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Carrasco?
Yeah, thank you. And, and I wanted to just offer thanks to the Downtown Association, their director Scott Neese, and, and the people, P-Bid team as well, and their board. I think this is a reflection of the work that they've been able to do, and specifically, P-Bid. And as we know, one of their most valued roles, which is through Groundworks. And, you know, actually, as of late, there's been some, some Groundworks employees that have been assaulted doing their job, and this is a very difficult job, and individuals that are out there helping day in and out to make our downtown beautiful and, and keep people happy and enjoying the downtown as they're out and about. And this is where the, the resources that our property owners, that they've agreed now to assess themselves. This is where they're going to, and I just want to say thank you to, to, again, Scott and your team. And I think the results here are a reflection of how valuable this, this has been, this assessment has been. And I look forward to this renewal. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carrasco and Councilmember Foley. I appreciate you acknowledging Scott Neese, who's actually here in person. I know he'll be retiring this year in just a couple of months. And I really want to thank him for his extraordinary leadership now for more than three decades in our downtown. This P-Bid may have been, well, he had a lot of great ideas, but this may have been his, the great accomplishment. This has been such a blessing to our downtown, and Groundworks has been incredibly essential, particularly in tough times like these. And we're just grateful to have that entire team out there of good people doing their best to, to make our downtown shine and to help it be a bit more friendly to, to many more folks. All right, any other questions or comments? Let's vote.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Corales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco.
Aye.
Davis.
Yes.
Sparza. Arenas. Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Licardo.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I do want to also note, thank you to all the property owners, since they just voted to tax themselves. Let's be very clear about this. This is, these are dollars that perform very much a public purpose, but they're private dollars. And those are dollars that private property owners committed because they believe in the future of our downtown, and they're committed. So, we appreciate their commitment very much. All right, let's move on then to 3.9, which is protective, protecting reproductive rights in the city of San Jose.
Do you want to do the ceremonial item that was going to be at 1:30?
Thank you very much for that reminder, Grace. Let's do that. Councilmember Foley, are, are we prepared? Okay, we're going to go back to the ceremonial item. We're going to recognize and commend Cancer Care Point on their 10th anniversary.
Good afternoon, everyone. Each year, nearly 10,000 residents living in Santa Clara County will be diagnosed with cancer, adding to the more than 1.6 million Californians currently living with a history of cancer. Today, it's my honor to recognize the success and work of Cancer Care Point in serving Silicon Valley community members with non-medical support. I'm equal, equally honored to present this recognition as I served on the board of Cancer Care Point when it was in its startup days, and went by actually another name before we adopted the really cool name, Cancer Care Point. For 10 years, Cancer Care Point has filled the gap of easily accessible, independent, non-medical support by providing personalized counseling, nutrition and exercise, support groups, resources, education, referrals, and even a wig boutique. Founded through the inspiration of Gay Crawford and initially funded with the support of the Samaritan Group, this organization works to assist families, caregivers, survivors, and patients learn how to manage their care. Cancer diagnoses and treatment often causes stress and anxiety, which can interfere with improved medical outcomes. The services that Cancer Care Point staff provides reduces these feelings for all those that care for them, from cancer patients and survivors to their families and caregivers. Today, they remain the only, only Silicon Valley community-based organization that serves people impacted by all cancer types at no cost, regardless of insurance, regardless of documentation, or financial status. They raise the bar for cancer care and continue to dedicate their time to ensuring that no one should ever have to face cancer alone. Mayor, would you please present this recommendation to Don Hoga, Executive Director of Cancer Care Point, who will accept this commendation and say a few words? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Foley, members of the city council, and Mayor Licardo for your commendation honoring Cancer Care Point's 10 years of service to our community. And thank you, Councilmember Foley, for your past service on our board. With me today is Jen Landis, Chair of Cancer Care Point's Board of Directors, and we have several clients, supporters, and board members online. 12 years ago, key community members came together, united under the recognition that non-medical support is critical to improve health outcomes and cancer care. They polled cancer survivors, cancer patients, family members, and caregivers to identify what non-medical care was needed. In 2012, Cancer Care Point's doors were opened. In our 10 years of service to the community, we've served over 10,000 clients through our programs, services, and educational outreach. Our work is not done. According to the Santa Clara County Public Health Department, cancer is the leading cause of death in Silicon Valley. We know COVID has impacted cancer diagnoses and, in many cases, cancer treatment. We also know that cancer creates financial hardship. Over 60% of the clients we serve identify as low-income, and that's identified at the time they come into our services. Many of them would not have identified as low-income before a cancer diagnosis. That's what makes our vision so important, that no one should face cancer alone. Cancer patient, family member, caregiver, cancer survivor, all are supported at no cost. So, what makes Cancer Care Point unique? It's our personalized services. There is no list of requirements for what programs or services a person must use, but rather an assessment of what the individual needs. An individual might need help identifying what foods are especially nutritious and easy to digest during chemotherapy, or what exercises are helpful when movement and balance are impacted by treatment. or what exercises are helpful when movement and balance are impacted by treatment. It might be talking to a counselor who isn't personally impacted by the cancer diagnosis so that the patient can focus on themselves, or participating in a support group with others who are dealing with the same type of cancer or in the same phase, using guided imagery or mindfulness to center oneself when anxious about the next treatment or scan, or getting a wig or head covering so that people don't identify the person by the disease. It might be calling to find resources and being able to speak in your native language. Or it might be receiving assistance to pay an overdue bill that is adding stress and anxiety due to fears of no utilities or homelessness. We are proud to partner with our community, volunteers, supporters, other community-based organizations, healthcare providers and elected officials to meet the needs of people impacted by cancer in our community. If you or someone you know has been impacted by cancer, we are here for you. The easiest way to connect is to go online and email us at info@cancercarepoint.org or go to our website, cancercarepoint.org, or call our helpline at 402, excuse me, 408-402-6611. Thank you for your support and helping us ensure that no one in Silicon Valley faces cancer alone. Thank you.
Okay, three point nine is protecting reproductive rights in the city of San Jose. We don't have any presentation here, or do we? Nora, did you want to jump in?
I am available to answer questions, Mayor.
Okay.
If council wants, I don't want to take a lot of time. But we were directed to take a look at what the city might do. And I think we concluded that the city has been doing since the early 1990s what can be done to protect women and others.
Could you speak a bit more in the mic?
Oops, I'm sorry, sure. Protect women and others seeking medical care and abortion services in San Jose. And our ordinances stem from the early 90s when San Jose was one of seven Operation Rescue cities. And there was a need to protect women seeking medical care, but also to protect the homes of doctors and elected officials. At that time, our mayor lived very close to the Planned Parenthood building that was the subject of protests. And our ordinances have been upheld. The city of San Jose was an early leader on this type of protection. And with respect to our zoning, we looked at the zoning code and the general plan. And this type of use for medical purposes is really allowed throughout the city. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions and give any background on our thinking on this.
Great. Thank you, Nora, and thank you for the analysis from your team, which is included in the agenda packet. Just wanted to note that we'll be subsequently considering budget message that I drafted. It does include funding for Planned Parenthood as well to assist. We know that there's going to be dramatically increased demand for their services in particular. All right, let's go to the council. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank you, Nora, and your team for looking into that and for bringing that up for us. It is such a relief to me. Obviously, I wasn't on the council in the 90s that we already have ordinances in place to protect reproductive rights and healthcare providers in our city. And I also want to thank councilmembers Carrasco, Asparza, Arenas and Foley for signing on to my memo originally. I know this council has affirmed reproductive rights many times and at least a couple of times while I've been on council. And I appreciate that we're able to stand in solidarity in that point. What I do want to ask is, what can we do to ensure that our residents know about these protections? First of all, and then also, this question is for you, Nora. Are the state laws, like the one in Texas that goes after kind of anyone connected with an abortion, are those applicable only in that state? So for people who are in that state?
Let me take my mask off to answer. The answer is yes. And it's, we looked at and thought a lot about what could we do to, was there more that we could do to potentially address perhaps people who were traveling here? But those are, that's, a lot of that is state law. We were thinking about subpoenas and issues like that. But that also is state law. And what the city can do to truly take care of women, the city did quite some time ago. And the doctors here and medical providers here may, at some point, someone in Texas may try to take an action here. But again, that would be more state law than something that the city could address. And we don't know where Texas law will go at this point.
So we don't, is it correct to say we don't know if providers in our city could be subject to any legal action if they provide care to a woman from one of those states such as Texas? We don't know if they could be.
That would be under Texas law, and it's not clear how far Texas law is going to go. And if there are, for example, a subpoena to get records here in California, that is covered by California law, not city law. And would be subject to codes that coordinate those types of services between the states.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. That's it for me. I don't think there's a motion that's needed. We have all the ordinances already. I just wanted to make sure that we were, that we were all aware of what there is. And if there's, if there's anything that we can do, and this is kind of for my colleagues or for the city manager, to ensure that our residents know about these protections, I'd love to hear others' thoughts on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. You know, I skipped over the public, and why don't we go to the public, and then we'll come back for the council discussion. Grace?
Starving people?
I'm happy to hear this memo, totally support it. I think that while we are protecting these protections, and it will certainly come in handy, a lot of unhoused women get their healthcare at Planned Parenthood. I wanted, I would be remiss if I didn't bring up the issue of women, unhoused women out there are not going to have, their food resources are going to be cut off June 30th. And I feel like I need to make sure that you guys ensure that that does not happen. There needs to be a smooth transition for the two groups who are most involved. The Housing Department knows who we are, and make sure there's a smooth transition so that we can still get that food from whatever providers are actually going to be doing it or whatever. But unhoused women need to have good access to healthcare, to abortion services, to food. It's not going to be any good if they can have reproductive services, and they're only going to starve to death. This year, we already have two babies that didn't make it full term. We've already had 104 people that, unhoused people that died on the streets as of last Friday. So we're not doing so well. So if we could make sure that we do a smooth transition and that we don't cut off food, that there isn't any lapse in the way that we take out our food, that there isn't even a week that goes by without food, that would be great because we can't do that. We take them out food, we take them out water, they need this. This is just as important as healthcare or anything else because what good is healthcare if you're going to starve to death or you're going to be dehydrated and die from that? So please make sure that these two groups urge and Hello Angels still have access to food like we have before, and we're not cut off because the city did not reach out to us.
Blair Beekman.
Hi, hi, thank you. Blair Beekman here. Thank you very much, San Jose, for your work on this item. I'm really trusting your leadership on this issue. And when Dev Davis gets involved with an issue like this, it's kind of nice. You know, when there's a Republican demand for something and Dev Davis kind of goes against that, that's a hopeful sign. So, so thank you. You know, it was mentioned that, you know, one of the staff said they'll be concerned about how far Texas is actually going to go with this issue. It's always concerning to hear that because that's what Texas does. I mean, they're defining liberalism as how conservative you can be and how to deny women their rights with issues and their ideas of choices. It's going to make health issue questions much more difficult for people. And it's just kind of sad. And I think in California, the same with gun issues, we've created an interesting counter to what Texas is doing that I hope really can be noted and that with time, it can just really be clearly understood that California is offering the overall better system and how to work. And Texas will just mature and grow up and learn to follow. California's good examples, and you guys are trying to do that now. And good luck how we can talk about this issue openly and get the facts about what the Supreme Court is really trying to do with this issue. And there can be, you know, ways to salvage our lives, but it takes a lot of effort and understanding. And good luck to explain those things to ourselves as a public so we can be clear how to continue to have needed good choices for ourselves. Thank you.
Back to the council.
Thank you. Just kind of a question that, I know this will be a bit out of left field, Nora, but would the city have any jurisdiction to be able to prohibit those who are trying to seek information about individuals who may be involved in delivering these services? That is, we know obviously that there's concern about prosecution under other states, under other state laws. And we wouldn't want our own residents to be prosecuted under those laws. Is there any protection we can provide against those who might seek to disclose that information from those who are providing healthcare services, for example?
So if I understand your question, Mayor, you're asking, could the city of San Jose pass a, pass an ordinance or pass a law that would keep healthcare providers or anyone else who has information about someone who came to California from another state from disclosing what occurred here?
That's right.
We can look at that. There are a lot of medical disclosure protections.
Yeah, HIPAA already covers this.
A lot of it.
Yeah.
But, but we can look a little further at that. We were looking at the subpoena issues and what right someone would have to subpoena the information and states recognize each other's subpoenas. And so it's a little bit hard for us to push into that. But we can look at the other.
Okay, if it's a situation where HIPAA covers it, fine. I don't want to, I don't want to be duplicative. And Lord knows, we've got enough ordinances already. But if it's something that would be helpful, it'd be good to know. Thank you. And I guess at some other time, someone can explain to me why a buffer is eight feet as opposed to 10 or any other distance. I don't know, but it seems like that is the law.
The cases, our buffer is eight feet. And in part, that's how far someone's arm, apparently, this is the rationale. Someone could reach out to give you materials and your arm could reach out to accept the materials. And so you get around First Amendment and speech issues that way. And 30 feet was, has been found by the courts to be too large of a bubble. So that's, that's eight feet has been supported. And ours is early, but later eight-foot bubbles have been protected by law.
All right, thank you. That's not an NDA regulation eight feet. I guess that's a normal size, folks, eight feet. Okay. We're, any other questions? Not, we'll move on?
I raised my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me, Councilmember Asparza. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and I had a question. Thank you for addressing the issue around trap laws. Similarly, I had a question about crisis clinics that have a tendency to co-locate near abortion providers. And they don't list themselves as anti-abortion clinics. And so there's a strategy around that. And so I wanted to ask if there was a way that we could address that through zoning requirements or other opportunities that we might have because the whole concept behind the crisis clinics is misleading advertising. It's, they're intended to delay to make it more difficult for the mother to eventually get an abortion, which is what she intended by reaching out to the clinic usually in the first place.
Thank you, Councilmember, for that question. We can look at whether or not there might be something we can do with zoning. In this entire area, it's hard not to run head-on into speech and other protected issues. But we can look at whether or not it's possible to perhaps set up some provisions in a zoning code to have distances perhaps or something like that between those types of uses. And we can survey and see if some others, we did not look at that.
Okay, that would be helpful. I'd appreciate that. Thank you. I don't think that needs a motion, so thank you.
Councilmember Mahan?
Thanks, Mayor. Just very briefly, since there's been some very public questioning of my position on these issues, I just want to thank my colleagues for their advocacy, thank Nora for the background and say that I'm proud to live in a city where we do protect women's reproductive rights. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we will then move on. Let's go to now the consent calendar, believe it or not. There are several items that my colleagues would like to pull. Councilmember Asparza would like to pull 2.18 relating to the naming of a new public park on Havana and Midfield. Councilmember Pross would like to pull item 2.22, which is the amendment to the master parking rate schedule for a commercial real estate parking program. Are there other items to pull? Looking for my colleague's hands. All right, without seeing any hands then, let's go first to 2.18, which is the naming of a new public park. Councilmember Asparza?
Thank you, Mayor, and I think we have a photo to put up.
There it is.
So here it is. Here's the mural. So today, by now, this little pocket park is very well-known. I know, I'm so excited. And thank you to the mayor for joining us with Caltrans for an announcement that we just made. But by now, this little pocket park is well-known throughout the city. I'm so honored today to make the motion to approve the park's new name as Mariposa Park. The community came together resoundingly, chose this name. And it's not just.
Neighborhood. So thank you all so much for the support, and we truly appreciate it. We're excited for breaking ground in August.
Blair Beekman?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. I'm not quite sure, kind of sure, but just to ask to be clear, are you going to take public comment on all consent calendar items now or just this item?
Just this item, Blair. We can come back on all the items.
Thank you. I'll wait then.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Tony?
Good afternoon. My name is Tony Romero. I'm a community organizer with Latinos United for New America. And just want to echo what Myra said. It's really great to see how the city and community can work together to create a space, a public space for the benefit of the neighborhood, of the community. So I really appreciate the work that Maya Sparza has done and, and her office. And I really want to again thank for, for being, listening to the community, for being part of this process and for giving that support. I'm kind of new to Luna, so I know this project has been for more than six years. So definitely it has been a great project to see. And, and I'm really excited for the groundbreaking. And we look forward to make this park beautiful for the community. Thank you.
Back to the council.
Thank you. And thank you to the members of the community. Congratulations for this important success. And thanks to the entire city team for making it happen. All right, so let's go forward to item 2.22, which is amendment to the master parking rate schedule. Now, there's a memorandum that Councilmember Proust and I signed. Councilor Proust, did you want to speak on this item?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And just briefly, this was in consideration for some projects that have been in the works for a number of years and really wanting to ensure that those projects had an opportunity to still complete their process with the, I guess, the understanding they would have had prior to the change that we'll be putting here with this new master parking rate schedule. And so asking for an exemption there on first, the info office and commercial downtown projects that have, had already submitted a development application, a complete development application to the city on or before the date. And then those that had commenced negotiations with DOT staff on terms for their parking agreement prior to this date as well, which would have all been under our existing master parking rate schedule. And then allowing our city manager and DOT to complete negotiations with projects that meet that recommendation there. And then finally, allowing DOT staff the discretion to negotiate with future applicants on potential long-term leases that may exceed the new rate schedule if it is necessary for building financing. And then ultimately, that would be subject to city council approval. That's, that's something that I think we've had the opportunity to do today. Wanted to just make sure that we can continue to have that opportunity in the future. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve this item with the memo that I've signed with the mayor.
Thank you. I should ask, Councilor Sparza, were you willing to?
That's an amendment. I'm happy to take the amendment to include your joint memo for this item in consent.
Okay. And the second, I forgot. Councilor Arenas, that's okay with her? Okay, great. So that's all incorporated within Councilmember Sparza's motion? Are there any other comments or questions on this? Okay, let's go to the public comment on all the consent items. Mr. Beekman?
Hi, Blair Beekman. Public comment on all the consent calendar items. A quick note of interest, Ladybug in Espanol is Maraquita. And I, I just thought that may be a friend to Mariposa at this time. I, there are two items that I'm interested in consent calendar. One is plastics. You'll be dealing with plastic ban issues and what to, how to address the future of plastics in the community. I've actually, I've been to Hawaii a few times in the past few months now, to the island of Maui. And they have some, they have a plastic ban there and it has a good feeling about it, a good vibe. And that people are really happy with it. And they, they, it may be a place to, to look into and ask questions about. And just, I don't know, just something for yourselves to consider. And to also note that for, you have another item that was of interest to myself. I think I should also note that, I can't find it here, Public West. Oh, yeah, that you have planning issues for the future of Deardadon Station, Google Village and, and Silicon, the BART, the future of BART. And just good luck in, in the work to do that. And I think what's important is to really be clear, you know, like the idea of timetables. You're starting to offer more clear timetables, you know, that, you know, we, we need to consider numbers like, you know, mid 2030s, 2040s is the time, you know, these things will really be here and will be really constructing. And we're still in the planning stages. And to make those sort of things clear to the public, it makes a more understandable process.
Back to the council.
Okay, let's vote then on the consent calendar motion from Councilor Sparza.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Corales?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
The Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mayhann?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to the report of the city manager, and I'm told that our city manager is with us virtually, even while Lee sits with us here in the chambers.
Yes, I am, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I do not have a report today. Thank you.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on to the June budget message for the next fiscal year. That's item 3.3. We'll be separately taking up the civic operating and capital budgets. I know, there'll be plenty to say. I think maybe it would be best for us first to go to the public and I'll be happy to, to speak. But I do want to say thank you to all my colleagues, all the members of the community who participated in this. We had a lot of input and I think it was all very helpful. And I also want to thank Jim Shannon and his team for their very hard work. Okay, let's go to the public and then we'll come back for more.
Chad?
Hi. Good evening, good afternoon. Thank you for taking me. Chad with Carpenter's. We just wanted to respectfully approach the city council and the mayor and say that we do support this budget. And we look forward to concerns and issues that happen in the downtown area that can be addressed with extra foot patrols and can also help to bring safe environment to not only residents, but those who come and work in the downtown or come and visit the downtown for the restaurants. So we here at the Carpenter's fully support this. Thank you.
We have one member of the public here, Dawn Coppin, if you would like to come down to speak.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members. I am Dawn Coppin. I'm the Executive Director of the San Jose Public Library Foundation. And I'm here to say thank you so much for the great things that you do have in the budget for 2022, 2023. There are some fantastic things, both for libraries and also for other nonprofits who use libraries, their clients use the libraries. And all together, we are building the city to be the kind of city that we want it to be with equitable access to information and resources. So thank you for adding additional hours for Sunday for some of the libraries. I appreciate the additional memo that you've put forward to allow the library itself to be able to determine which branches are best served to have those additional hours. And I also respectfully ask you to consider what it would look like for the whole city if we had all of the libraries open to pre-pandemic hours. With that, thank you.
Back online, Mark?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mark Landgraf with the Santa Clara Valley Open Space Authority. Really appreciate everything in the mayor's budget message that is related to parks and trails. So important to constituents in the city as well as the urban forestry measures. And especially want to draw attention to our support for the proposal for $100,000 to Peninsula Open Space Trust for a wildlife feasibility study across Monterey Road. You know, with the very significant investment that the city has made through voter-approved Measure T funding, preservation of North Coyde Valley, in part for wildlife movement, of course, as well for floodplain protection, groundwater recharge, recharge, and so many other natural infrastructure benefits to the community. We really think that public investment is very well-served in forwarding the feasibility study and look forward to working with Post and the city on that. Thank you very much.
Jeremy?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jeremy Berus. I am the Senior Policy and Organizing Manager with the Amigos de Guadalupe Center for Justice and Empowerment. On behalf of Amigos de Guadalupe, we would like to express our gratitude to Mayor Liccardo and the mayor's office for investing in our East San Jose community with the proposed $500,000 to purchase the Chavez family home on Sharp Avenue. In the spirit of Cesar Chavez, the home will be used as a central gathering space in East San Jose to host community organizing meetings. And we have agreements from the Chavez family to preserve a number of artifacts from Cesar and his family for the community to enjoy. Thank you for your vision of keeping Cesar Chavez's legacy alive by preserving the Chavez family homes that East San Jose community can utilize the space for years to come. We would also like to express our support for the memo authored by Carrasco, Parales, Arenas, and Davis, and particularly in support of BD 75, the pilot program for transforming school culture. Thank you for your time.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. A very much of a thank you, how the mayor offered that he's worked towards and created a balanced budget in San Jose. It's a really important concept that I think can be a really good example for other local Bay Area cities. And it makes me proud of San Jose. And I like to say that when I, when I go to other cities now. With that said, good luck on, on ideas of racial equity that can be in the future of budgeting issues. And how, and I think that's, I think that's from a balanced budget ideas, we're working towards racial equity ideas and being open to that. It's a great combination for our future. With that said, from my previous item, I'm hoping that we can really consider the ideas of the importance of accountability in our practices. And if we, if we really want to create openness and accountability and how, and what our budget ideas are doing and overall public policy practices, we're really on, in a good way to work and a good way to think about our future. And with that said, good luck how we can be open and accountable and honest with ourselves, what to really expect in 2023 and whatever to expect, as obviously I've gone around a gambit of issues of what we can expect in 2023. Good luck how that can be explained in whatever it is, whatever will be happening in that year. Good luck how we can do that this fall and make clear whatever that will be. And I think that's about it for myself for now, and thank you for your time.
Greg?
Good afternoon. My name is Greg Pensinger. I'm the Director of Downtown Streets Team here in Santa Clara County. I'm here to talk about Streets Team Enterprises, which is our social enterprise arm, and our recent contract that we developed with, in partnership with Caltrans to offer up to 300 people transitional employment who are either currently or previously experiencing homelessness over the next two years. As a matter of fact, if you were to go over to 237 right now, you might see them out there on the street. With this project, we're offering transitional living wage employment opportunities to people in Santa Clara County experiencing homelessness. But in order to ensure that some of those people come from this city in San Jose, we really need to, we needed to rebuild our flagship program. And so the, the funding that's recommended in this budget memo will ensure that we can, you know, offer these opportunities while also helping to support the revitalization of downtown San Jose and serve the city's most vulnerable residents. Thank you so much for your time.
Marion?
Hello, I want to just express my, my thanks and support of the opportunity to provide some comments here. My name is Marion Vernon. I am the Wildlife Linkages Program Manager with Peninsula Open Space Trust. And just following on the comments from Mark Landgraf, I want to thank the mayor and the council members for the budget item designating $100,000 to Peninsula Open Space Trust for Monterey Road Wildlife Corridor Safety Improvements. Peninsula Open Space Trust and the Santa Clara Valley Open Space Authority and the city have invested in the protection of Coyde Valley to benefit wildlife, protect wildlife connectivity, and achieve the other goals that Mark outlined previously. We consider the city an important partner for achieving our Coyde Valley vision. And we appreciate the opportunity to continue to advance conservation efforts in collaboration with the city. Within Coyde Valley, Monterey Road poses a significant barrier for wildlife movement because of the concrete median and associated glare screen. This funding within the budget would be used to identify some modifications to that concrete barrier, median barrier on Monterey Road to alleviate wildlife vehicle collisions and improve motorist safety. And we look forward to collaborating with the City of San Jose, San Jose Department of Transportation, and other stakeholders on this project to create a more safe and wildlife-friendly median along Monterey Road and North Coyde Valley. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Jill?
Hi, thank you. Jill Borders here. I just want to read from the March 10th, 2020 city council meeting where it was unanimously passed, everybody there, the mayor included, passed to have the land use designation to go to all 56 parks. And when Councilmember Jimenez questioned city manager David Sykes saying, "Okay, now what do you want me to do? How am I going to move the memo, you know, add the budget item, dah, 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 dah?" City manager David Sykes said this, quote, "These issues are extremely technical. And at this point, we're acknowledging the fact that even with these technicalities, in order to offer the reassurance and resolve the fear issues in the community, we'll figure out a way to move forward with the overlay for the other 56 mobile home parks." And so I want to tell you today, thank you, first of all, to Councilmember Foley and Councilmember Jimenez and Councilmember Parales. You have earned my trust. Even though we missed for some reason putting in the budget in 2020, then we missed again putting in the budget in 2021, we can remedy human error here by moving these forward, getting this money into the budget and doing the technical work. As our previous city manager said, it's technical, but we're going to do it. And we're going to do it because Councilmember Deb Davis at the time said, "We, you are San Jose. We don't want you to lose any sleep." The mayor said, "We don't want you to lose any sleep over this." He's quoted in the San Jose Spotlight saying, "We're going to do this because we know that it's, you're losing sleep. It's bad for you." All of these kinds of things. And so why is this so hard to get done? We are losing faith in you. Well, I've lost it. I'm just going to tell you this. Except for the people that have basically said, "We've got your back." And so in the mayor's, you know, supplemental memo or whatever, where he's advocating for $400,000 for Al Fresco for a study for the street, I just want to be as important as that. I just want to be as important as Al Fresco. Thank you.
Hillary?
Hello, my name is Hillary Thorson. I am a Library and Education Commissioner for District Six. Thank you so much for including the additional funding for the library in your June budget, budget message, restoring funding permanently for 13 branches and adding Sunday hours for those 13. I fully support the additional funding, but even with the additional funding, that still leaves 10 branches with fewer hours than before the pandemic. I would ask you to restore the library hours of the remaining 10 branches. The library brings joy to people and we could all really use that these days. Investing in public community spaces makes a difference. It gives people hope and opportunities. The library is one of the last free spaces where you can just go and trust that you will find helpful people, no strings attached. The library is often the first indoor community space that people visit in our city. I know it was my daughter's, and it's one of the space that people can continue to visit their whole lives. Restoring the funding now will make immeasurable differences for all the people of the city because, because every single because, because every single district has so many people who rely on the services. It would be a really great legacy for this council to fully restore pre-pandemic hours at all of the library branches and even expand them with Sunday hours, at least at the 13. And I hope you'll consider all the children, teens, families, seniors, and workers who would benefit from these additional hours. Thank you.
Robert?
Hi, Robert Hernandez here with Cambrian Park Little League. And I am here to support Pam Foley's memorandum BD 56 for the budget. This money will be used to help the first team, baseball team, Little League team from San Jose to be represented at the Little League World Series in Williamsport in August. Our program is for children that are, that have special needs or disabilities, and we are the only Little League that is helping these children. So a couple of the children come from different areas in San Jose, such as Pam Foley's district, Deb Davis's district, and Sergio Jimenez's district. And we're looking, I'm just hearing to report for Pam, Pam Foley, and putting this into the budget.
Becca?
Hello, San Jose City Council. I am a community organizer with Planned Parenthood Marmontay and also a former patient here. First off, I would just like to thank the mayor for prioritizing reproductive health care and really coming through on his commitment to expanding access to care. As somebody who not only has received care here and now somebody who's deeply moved by the mission and service provisions, I understand how critical these services are for our community. And we all know that reproductive rights are under attack across the country. And while California is on track to remain a safe space for reproductive health care, we are expecting a massive influx of patients, and according to our estimates, about 200 to 500 additional patients per week across our serviced region. This $250,000 for clinical exam training and service expansion will not only maintain and improve the quality of care for our patients, but also ensure that our health centers can keep up with this influx in patients from out of state while providing top-quality and compassionate care for residents of San Jose itself. So with that, I urge the city council to support this funding for crucial and life-saving and preserving care in our city. Thank you.
Kami?
Hello, my name is Kami Zimmer. I am also with Planned Parenthood Marmontay. I'd once again like you to, like to thank you for bringing the topic of reproductive care expansion onto this agenda. Like Becca said, the health clinic expects to be receiving a high number of patients in upcoming months. And the $250,000 the mayor has proposed to be allocated to this health center will allow Planned Parenthood to support the training of the new clinicians to support these new high numbers of patients. Planned Parenthood trains their clinicians to be culturally sensitive to best serve their patients from a wide variety of backgrounds. As a queer individual who has received care from Planned Parenthood, seeing a clinician who was dedicated to provide me with an unbiased care experience is a clinician who further ensures my safety by making it known that I deserve the same healthy life as my heterosexual peers. I've had a series of different hormone level complications, and many of doctors have been quick to put me on birth control, saying that it may help balance my hormones, and also saying that it will be convenient to later on if I decide to engage sexually with the opposite sex. I have since learned that my hormone complications can be managed through diet and exercise, which leads me to wonder if previous doctors were really attempting to help me or if they were just further assuming that my queerness was a phase that I would eventually grow out of. Planned Parenthood clinicians have never treated me with the same assumption. It is necessary that clinicians receive training on how to provide unbiased care. The $250,000 the city council will be allocating to this organization will allow Planned Parenthood to support the clinician trainings and allow for queer and other represented communities to see their health and prosperity valued in the healthcare system, no matter what gender, sexual orientation, race, or ethnicity they identify with. Thank you so much for prioritizing this issue.
Lindsay?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Lindsay Mansfield. I'm the Director of Support Services within YWCA Golden Gate Silicon Valley. Sounds like a lot of really important causes here. So I'm calling in today to express overwhelming support and appreciation for Councilmember Arenas and Carrasco's memo. From 2020 to the year 2021, YWCA saw a 576.25% increase in referrals for sexual assault survivors that came through San Jose Police Department. This increase in referrals was due to a number of factors, which we've probably spoken about before, but essentially having an embedded advocate, increasing our communication, and simplifying our referral process. These collaborative efforts help see that survivors are informed of their rights and have access to an advocate at the time of reporting. Survivors rely on systems in place to be able to provide support in a timely manner and in a comprehensive manner. YWCA staff are dedicated and relentless in our support of survivors. We make every effort to provide services as quickly and seamlessly as possible. Many of us identify as survivors ourselves, so we understand what it's like to be in the system. Unfortunately, there simply are not enough staff to provide the in-depth services that survivors deserve with the increased need that we're seeing. What this looks like is that a survivor may be able to access a support group but not get ongoing case management. Case managers are critical in empowering survivors, navigating systems, and providing that ongoing advocacy and accompaniment throughout the duration of someone's case. Survivors deserve to have access to services immediately and ongoing for their unique healing journey. Having two additional advocates as well as more infrastructure within San Jose PD is a critical step in addressing the gaps we currently face. Investing in and supporting survivors now is an investment in the wellbeing for the entire community. Thank you so much for your time.
Lucila?
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Lucila Ortiz. I'm the Organizing Director at Californians for Justice in East San Jose. I'm here to speak in support of the memo from Councilmembers Arenas and Carrasco, including Budget Document Number 75, Transforming School Cultures. With all the conversations that are happening around school safety, it's really important that we center prevention at the heart core of it. When we make sure that students feel welcome and included as they are in our schools, then we don't have to worry about all the other stuff that are happening. So, you know, it's really important that we advance equity and educational justice in Eastside Union High School District Schools by fostering a partnership between youth and adults where students of color are at the center. This can set the foundation for long-term systems and culture change in Eastside so that students of color receive the supports and resources that they need inside and outside the classroom to be successful. This is at the heart of what keeps us safe as a district and as a city as a whole. Some of the quotes from students who have been through this program is, I think that students need to be uplifted and given a voice, but also that they need to be put into the decision-making positions. They know what would help them the best, so they should be given the power. And then a quote from a teacher who also went through this program is, "What has stuck with me is how students are feeling heard and are feeling those relationships with their teachers right now. I am taking away that we need to find a way to change that as relationships are so crucial to making students feel comfortable learning. I hope that you will support the memo. Thank you for your time."
Sharon?
Thank you, council members. I'm Sharon Deno of the South Bay Coalition to End Human Trafficking. I want to acknowledge the significant strides the city has made in addressing sexual assault in our community. We do urge that we need to continue to meet the needs of the community and survivors of sexual assault by building capacity. We are currently over capacity in terms of ability to investigate and respond with confidential advocates. These cases require extensive investigative time as well as training for the officers and require time and support from confidential advocates. We completely support the recommendation to add four more sexual assault detectives and two confidential advocates who will be available to survivors immediately following response. So, thank you very much for your time.
Barbara?
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Maroney, and I am from Cambrian Park Little League. I'm here to support Pam Foley's memorandum BD Number 56. I am the manager of the Challenger Program for Cambrian Park Little League and also the, on the District 12 Board for Little League. Challenger Baseball is a division of Little League for children with special needs. This is our 12th season with a team at Cambrian Park. We welcome children from all over San Jose. No other league in our area has a team. We have been selected to play an exhibition game at the Little League World Series this summer. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for these children. San Jose has never sent a team to the Little League World Series. Challenger Baseball has been an avenue for fostering friendship and building community regardless of ability, both on and off the field. We are extremely excited to be afforded this opportunity, and we thank you in advance for your support. Thank you.
Victor?
When I start this, council, mayor, and participants, Victor Vazquez, Coach Secretary Director at Somos Mayfair. And I'm calling also, we all know the pandemic injustice continues to play our, our communities, and we need to create alternative solutions and redistribute resources to the people who are impacted, from youth, seniors, to preserving our historic places, to funding childcare and addressing gun violence and, and overall violence is key. CSPO Day Collective and Somos Mayfair would like to support the following items. For Memo 31 authored by Councilmember Arenas and Carrasco to expand the City of San Jose's preschool, after-school, and other recreational opportunities for low-income and vulnerable students. If you want to support our youth, we must fund our youth. I would like to also include BD Number 75, the, to support the transforming school cultures. I have witnessed the power of CFJ and the young people who organize in those schools to create a better culture in our, in our, in East San Jose. Would like to also support the preservation of the Chavez home and also increase access to Native American tribes and Latin acknowledgements. It's a, it's a important for us to preserve the homes, Chavez home, and to ensure that Amigos de Guadalupe has complete control of such property. We also support Councilmember Carrasco's funding memo that includes the Virginia Apartments, Eastside Business Manager, Alam Rock Cultural District, Eastside Grove, Emma Pritch Park Electrification, Senior Services, Hispanic Foot Nation, and like we said the last time, we're in support of the real coalition demands, the creation of an essential council, the African-American housing development, the Promotor Marrow, and the expansion of reproductive rights and healthcare. Thank you for your time.
Oscar?
Hello, my name is Oscar Quiroz Mandrano. I am a community member but also organizer with Somos Mayfair, wanting to show support for affordable housing or alternative housing for South Bay CLT to actually get funding to, to make sure that the Virginia apartments are able to, to move forward and support community, but also find alternative solutions to create affordable housing here in the city of San Jose. Thank you.
Caller ending in 9157. Press star six to unmute. 9157.
Hi, Martha O'Connell from GS MOL. Very scattered and disorganized because on another phone, I'm waiting to testify on a bill before the State Senate Judiciary Committee. So please forgive me for not being as organized as I usually am. I am urging you to accept the Foley-Jimenez memo or the Raul Peralles memo to get all of the remaining 56 mobile home parks in the city of San Jose rezoned to mobile home. And because I'm so disorganized, I'm just going to read a couple of quotes from letters that have been submitted to you, one from the Affordable Housing Network. "Without this funding, the commitment you made in 2020 is still no more than a declaration of intent." And from the Law Foundation, "We cannot predict which mobile home parks will be next at risk of closure. All should be protected." "When that many residents are at risk of displacement, the answer should never be that we have done enough in the city, but instead that we will take the most protective steps that we can with urgency." So please, vote today to honor the commitment you made to the mobile home residents who packed your chambers on March 10th, 2020. Thank you for your consideration.
Emily?
Good afternoon. My name is Emily Schwing. I'm the Public Affairs Director at Veggie Lucian and part of the CSPO Day Collective. First, I want to say thank you for this budget message, especially the items focused on open space and park use. I would like to add our support specifically for the funding needed for electrical and lighting infrastructure at Emma Pritch Farm Park. For Budget Document 82, for electrical upgrade to Emma Pritch Farm Park that would allow Veggie Lucian to plan for more critical food system infrastructure. According to the County of Santa Clara Food System Work Plan, the crisis during COVID-19 and what followed indicated a great need for a, for a Santa Clara County food hub, and specifically a San Jose food hub, which can support a distribution infrastructure, facilitate connections between regional farmers, particularly smaller BIPOC growers and local farmers markets. This electrical upgrade would allow Veggie Lucian to become the much-needed food hub in the heart of San Jose. We look forward to working alongside the team at Pier on S to make this a reality. I would also like to express support for other investments that would specifically support East San Jose families and businesses, including Budget Document 72 for urban greening at Emma Pritch Farm Park, Budget Document 63 for the creation of a cultural district in the Alam Rock border, the purchase of the historical Cesar Chavez home, and Prosperity Labs Mesa Redonda. Thank you.
Vanessa?
Hey, everyone. I'm Vanessa Parley. I am with Planned Parenthood Marmontay. And I want to thank the mayor for prioritizing reproductive healthcare through this budget message and ask the council to support the allocation of funds for Planned Parenthood Marmontay's clinical exam training and service expansion. When my husband and I decided to get pregnant, we were exceptionally privileged to have access to amazing medical professionals and sufficient health insurance. At our 20-week anatomy scan, when we learned our baby girl had a fatal heart defect, it was a saving grace that we trusted our doctors. And when we decided to have an abortion at 22 weeks pregnant, we could not have asked for better support from our family, friends, and colleagues. I'm acutely aware of how important it is for people to have safe and reliable reproductive healthcare. Already for many, that's not an option, and with the Supreme Court's impending decision to overturn Roe v. Wade, many more people will face significant barriers when they are already facing an extremely difficult situation. We should be doing anything we can to support these people, and they will now have to worry about finding a physician they trust, travel further, and pay more to get the services they need. This does not just impact those of us living in states who are friendly towards reproductive healthcare. Demand is going to increase here, making it more difficult for Northern California residents to also receive care. Again, I want to thank the mayor for prioritizing reproductive healthcare. This funding is honestly the least we can do to support people trying to make the best health decisions for themselves and their families. Thank you.
Lorena?
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Hi, my name is Lorena Chavez, Vice President of the Eastside Union High School District School Board. I'm calling in to speak in support of memo authored by Councilmember Arenas and Carrasco, which calls for the inclusion of BD 75 in the FY 2022-23 City of San Jose Budget. BD 75 will really set a foundation for long-term systems and culture shifts at school sites within Eastside, helping bridge teachers, administrators, and students that advance a district-wide equity agenda. Over this past year, our school communities have grabbled with the challenges of returning to in-person learning. And there really are no words to express the difficulty that our educators, our students, our families have endured this past years. There was increased levels of trauma and stability, lack of connection, and so much more. And all students in West Coast, but especially those from our marginalized communities are in need of unprecedented support. All of this is happening as a result of systemic inequities that were exacerbated by the pandemic. And these systemic inequities, systemic issues require partnership in alignment with government at different levels. It's not just the responsibility of the schools. So I ask that today you approve this and join Eastside as a response to our schools, our communities, and say, we stand for our future and are ready to support our students and our families. Thank you.
Lauren?
Hi, my name is Lauren Bab, and I'm Vice President of Public Affairs for Planned Parenthood Marmontay. I would like to thank the mayor and the city council for their unwavering support of an investment of $250,000 to support our clinical exam training and service expansion. If Roe v. Wade is overturned in June, it is likely that we're looking at 26 states to ban abortion. And what does that? And what does that mean? Well, it just means people will still seek care, and mainly in our communities of San Jose and throughout California. We are incredibly grateful to the city of San Jose for continuing to be a beacon of reproductive health. And Planned Parenthood Marmontay will continue to be the largest affiliate in the country and keep our doors open for those that seek abortion and continue to develop telehealth and behavioral health models that will reduce stigma of abortion and provide more care to all. So again, thank you so much for this commitment, and we hope that you vote to approve these funds so that we can continue to provide care here in San Jose and to those who seek care here. Thanks.
Caller ending in zero five zero six. Press star six to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Hi, my name is Dinah, and I would like to thank the mayor and the council members for considering the additional funding and financing for the animal services. We have been very challenged, and we look forward to honestly anything that is possible at this point to help. The shelter capacity is four hundred animals, and right now they are at or about six hundred. And they have limited capacity of care and issues that go along with that is creating a lot of issues for the animals as well as the people taking care of them. I would like you to consider the budget documents proposed by councilmembers Mahan and Davis. And my apologies for being a little bit distracted as I'm in the process of driving. So thank you very much for the consideration, and I appreciate everybody listening to the issues that we have brought up.
Wendy?
Thank you very much. I'm Wendy Mahaney-Guruhu. I'm the Chair of the Library and Education Commission. I want to thank the mayor and the council members for their work on this budget process. I want to also notably point out that some of the libraries will have hours restored to pre-pandemic hours, and some libraries will have some Sunday hours available. I'd like to encourage you to continue to do that for all of our libraries so that we think about equity across the system. We still have ten library branches that'll have eight hours fewer every week, and so we would encourage you to do that. Secondarily, I'd like to support Councilmember Arenas and Carrasco's work around equity when it comes to childcare and recreational programs for children. Not only are they great for our city's children, they help the economy by supporting families who are working, families that need the childcare in the summer and through the school years. So from our point of view, what these two councilwomen are working on is very, very clear and supported by the community. Thank you.
Back to one more speaker. Paula?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Paula Escobar, and I'm a high school student currently attending Evergreen Valley High School. Today, I'm coming to you in order to support the memo authored by Councilmember Arenas and Carrasco, which is the inclusion of BD number seventy-five for the city of San Jose budget. This for transforming school cultures and ensuring that, that the student equity councils, both at Silver Creek or Evergreen, are created and committed to uplifting students. This past year, I actually got the privilege of being able to participate in one of these student equity councils. Not only are these activities necessary to ensure students are welcome in their school environments, but these groups and committees also play a big role in ensuring that school climates at our San Jose schools are improving and are being dedicated towards equity and improving student wellness and student belonging. I believe that when we put money into these programs, we're directly telling our students that they matter. Their experiences matter, and their education matters. We need to continue empowering students as much as possible, especially those that are first generation and low income. I strongly urge support in this, I strongly urge support for this memo and greatly appreciate you all for your time. Thank you.
Tao?
Good afternoon. My name is Tao, and I'm with the South Bay Community Land Trust. I'm also a resident of District Four in San Jose. I'm here in support of Councilmember Carrasco's budget document number sixty-nine to fund technical assistance for the acquisition of the Virginia Apartments, which is an eighteen-unit naturally occurring affordable apartment complex where the tenants have been the stewards of this neglected building. As an emerging land trust, we know that simply building new housing is not the answer, especially when those luxury developments end up displacing our low-income communities of color. And I want to stress the importance of permanent affordability and how models like cooperatives and land trusts will get us there. Because we know that housing justice is racial justice, is climate justice, is gender justice, is economic justice. And when more people have a say in how their neighborhoods and buildings are run, rather than the instability that they face now, we are expanding democracy when we are able to achieve permanent affordability. Our mission of community-led development needs more commitment from the city. And as regional and state funding increases for preservation, so must the cities. So I thank Councilmember Carrasco for her advocacy, and I hope that the city will continue to do more to end displacement. Thank you.
Back to the council.
Thank you. Thanks to all the members of the community who took the time to speak today as well as yesterday. And in many other ways, over the last, what, three or four months of this budget process, we had community meetings prior to the March message, three more community meetings prior to this June message. And I know several public hearings here in council, and I appreciate the engagement of our residents to really alert us to where our blind spots are and where we need to be investing dollars. We know there are a lot of needs in this city, and it's important for us to hear from our community. Also appreciate those who participated on the balancing act tool and wrote us emails and communicated in other ways. I really want to thank the entire budget team, Bonnie Dong, Jim Shannon, everybody on the team. Jim, I know you guys were working on a lot of late nights and many weekends over the last several weeks. And also, big thanks to the many department directors who took a lot of time, I know, sometimes responding to me on my weekend texts to be able to get us information, to be able to make good decisions, particularly John Cesarelli and Nicole Burnham and Matt Kano and John Risto and Laura Wells, Chief Mata, Assistant Chief Joseph, Jill Bourne, many others. Jackie Morales-Fran. There are a lot of folks who had to be responsive while they were running their departments and juggling a lot of other important tasks. I appreciate that. They together processed a hundred and one cost estimates from all of us, from the council. So we need to be mindful of what they're juggling every year as we continue to ask them about these costs so we can, we can together figure out what the best path is forward. They developed forty-two manager budget amendments. We know several of those were very involved and required an enormous amount of work. And of course, I want to thank all my, my colleagues for the ninety-five budget documents. They, I think we did our best to try to incorporate as many as we could. The request totaled nineteen point five million dollars. We didn't have nineteen point five, but we, we, Jim managed to find some creative ways to get us as much as we could to address as many of these needs as possible. And I really want to thank Mackenzie Mossing on, on our team, Mayor's Office, and various team members who jumped in to help support her. And she did a great job in getting all of this together on our end for this budget message. This is, as you can tell by its length, not merely long because I'm verbose, but also long because there were a lot of demands, a lot of requests, and a lot to juggle. I appreciate everything she did. First, I understand, speaking of juggling, we submitted our budget statement, our, our June budget message, but I think the end of it was cut off, apparently. Is that right, Jim? And some of the, some of the items on the use, the source and use statement were omitted. And, and I'm told that you may need to supplant those for the record.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Jim, Jim Shannon, City's Budget Director, yes. So in the back of the message, there's a city source and use of funds, which sort of tracks all of the items that are directed in the June budget, but budget messages sort of helps from a technical perspective for us to come back next week with all the technical transaction to have an appropriation ordinance. So all of the, all the items that are in that source and use of funds are all discussed in the body of the memo. But for record purposes, we'd like to just maybe just take a second. There's some reason a few of the rows got suppressed, so the math all worked, but those rows don't, don't show up. So I just want to state them here for the record. So there's three of them. There's the, the liquidation of the Essential Services Reserve, which is six point nine million dollars in twenty-two, twenty-three, and one point nine million dollars on, ongoing. There's the re-budget for the Mayor's Office for twenty-five, for twenty-four thousand eight six eight. And there's the re-budget for the District One Council Office of three forty-six nine one two. That's it.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. All right. I also want to clarify something in my own message on page twenty-six. Land Emma Pritch Park, and I take full responsibility for any errors or misstatements in, in the budget document because I'm a micromanager when it comes to, to writing these things, and I just screwed up on this. The one million dollars that goes to Emma Pritch Park is allocated to PRN S, to the, the city to use for infrastructure. There is a separate allocation of thirty-three thousand dollars and change that goes to Vegilution. The suggestion was not that we give the million to Vegilution, but I know the way it's written, that can be read that way. And I want to make sure that's clarified, that the million dollars is really for that electrical and other infrastructure. And hopefully, that will be a catalyst for landing some larger grants for the necessary park improvements there. I wanted to take a moment to go through the memoranda that have emerged since last week. There were several, and appreciate the, again, the input from my colleagues. In some cases, you know, I have the benefit of being able to talk to four of my colleagues. I don't have the benefit of being able to talk to any more than four because of the Brown Act. So that means sometimes I'm not getting all of the information, so that's why we can talk about it here on the dais. I, as I, as I look at the various memos, I, I certainly support the memoranda from Vice Mayor Jones, Councilmembers Foley and Cohen. With regard to Councilmembers Arenas and Carrasco memo that they signed, just the two of them, I'd be supportive of all those recommendations from two A, two B, two C, and two D. I would, I think after talking to staff, I'd want some clarification with understanding that the advocates that would be hired would be working for, as they have always been working in the past, for a nonprofit organization, not for the city. I think there's some conflicts of interest. The advocates are also working for the city that employs a law enforcement. And I'm happy to talk about that in some detail, but I assume that's not, I'll assume for a moment that that's not the intention, and we can talk more about it. And then also, that with regard to police staffing, I know there are many recommendations around how and who exactly we hire as we're able to ramp up police staffing in the future, that these are really recommendations for the city manager than to, to clearly consider and take back to the council in each year in which they are to be considered and allow the city manager, obviously, to make recommendations about the city manager's view about how to best meet the, the public safety needs, but with some explicit response to whatever that request is for staffing. So that way, the council's very aware of what the decision is with regard to that, that particular use. We just can't bind future councils, of course, about how they will spend dollars. We can only bind ourselves about this year's spending, so we just need to stay within the parameters of that law. On recommendation three from Councilmembers Arenas and Carrasco, I, I would support it with the understanding that I think what is being referred to there is the ending fund balance of the general fund, as reported by the city manager in the annual report that comes out in the fall. And if that's, that's the understanding, and certainly we can probe that some more through discussion, I would just ask it also include not just the capital costs and excess of construction, but also the FF and E costs that are related to those public facilities, because we know that runs several million dollars, and those needs are substantial as well. Okay, and Councilmember Sparza's recommend memorandum, I support recommendations one A and one B. With regard to one A on the crime analyst, I would just, I, I think it's, I would just ask that it be included with the same disclaimer about a future hiring in future years, that the city manager would need to very clearly acknowledge what decisions are being made, what recommendations are being made about that particular staffing, so that the council can clearly understand that. And then with regard to the warm line, I've been told, and Lee, correct me if I'm wrong on this. The county has not yet completed its cost and implementation analysis. Is that right? They're still working on that?
That is correct.
Okay. So I certainly support setting something aside for us to consider from a budget stabilization reserve. I would just ask that we not make that decision until the county comes back and tells us something more about its analysis. So we all have a clear idea of what we're funding, what's needed. And then there was a memorandum submitted by four of my colleagues, Councilmembers Arenas, Carrasco, Davis, and Peralos. I support the recommendations, one A and two, with the clarification that, that, the, the language in the recommendation regarding recommendation two is really around directing city manager to go analyze, bring back options, make a recommendation. There's quite a bit more directive, prescriptive language in the body of that memorandum. And I wouldn't support jumping to that conclusion until we, the council's had an opportunity to see staff's analysis. So I would just adopt the recommendation, obviously. The language that's in the, in the discussion is not part of the recommendation. I know that's why we distinguish the two, and I just want to make sure that's, that would be made explicit. With regard to recommendation one B, I look forward to hearing from Councilmember Peralos through our dialogue here on the council, or perhaps if he wants to take this up with staff, what, what specific safety-related elements were not met in the direction that was given on page nineteen of the June message. And certainly, if there's, if it's really around paving that area, then, then certainly if there's funding there in the District Three CNC fund that is available, that would certainly be a sensible way to get that done. And then finally, let's see, I guess it's not filing. We have a couple more recommendations here. Recommendation one C regarding to cruising, I, I support accepting the MBA number twenty-nine, but I, I think it's important to clarify that that MBA does not actually call the question on the policy. I think that's a separate decision that council would need to make. Nora, did you want to weigh in on that?
That would be correct, Mayor. If that ordinance is to be repealed, it would have to be repealed by an ordinance being brought forward to council if we were given that direction.
Okay. So we can certainly allocate a few hundred bucks that's needed for taking the signs down, but I think, I, I assume that we can come back in the next, in the next several weeks with a discussion on the council about the policy itself, without knowing where that is exactly in the line. Lee, you don't happen to know off the top of your head, do you?
I don't, but it's a repeal, so there's not a, a whole lot of additional policy work. So Nora and I can speak and see if there's room on the twenty-first or twenty-eighth.
Okay. So I just want to offer my thoughts on the suggestions or the memoranda that are submitted already. And I thank my colleagues with whom I've had the pleasure of being able to talk to about this budget message, Councilmembers Foley, Vice Mayor Jones, Councilmember Cohen, and Councilmember Martinez. Thank them for their input as well. All right. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I want to start, first of all, by thanking Jim, Bonnie, and your budget office for the countless hours that go into preparing this budget. And actually, I know that the minute we approve this, you begin planning for next year's budget. Although, next step, getting this, closing out this year's budget and bringing back the finals in October, so it's, it's a year back the finals in October, so it's a year-on process, and I appreciate all of the work that you do. I want to thank all of the council colleagues for all of their thoughtful proposals through the budget documents and everything. There's a credible, a number of suggestions and things that I know the mayor's tried to incorporate a lot, as we've talked, I've been able to talk to him through our Brown Act. Thank the members of the public. We've heard from a lot of members of the public about their priorities. That helps. I know each of us, as council members, it helps to know what our residents are thinking about and what would help them feel like we're providing the proper service. Thank the mayor for all of the work that goes into consolidating all of this into a comprehensive budget. Obviously, this was a good year to be doing it. We had some extra resources to spend, and it's allowed us to really address community needs. And as far as I understand it, pretty much every dollar that's available in this budget has been allocated, so we're not holding on to more than we should. We do obviously have healthy reserves, just, you know, in case we need them, but we're investing in the community in this budget, so I'm very excited about it. Just to mention a couple things. One, you know, I've been very, very supportive of increased library hours. I'm excited to see that we're getting partway there in this year's budget. I'm hoping that this is the first in a two-year step to get us to the point that several members of the community brought up, wanting to get to full schedule at all of our branches. My hope is that eventually we'll have seven-day service at every branch in the city, although in the direction that I'll put into the motion about the schedule for this year and the flexibility of staff, I expect that staff won't just use that flexibility to say, here's what we think are the right branches to start with, but may use that flexibility during the year to say, hey, you know, this branch didn't really get the Sunday traffic we thought it would, and there's another branch that might do better and allow some adjustments as the year goes on, and potentially adjustments in the future, and that will help guide us to whether or not we need all 23 branches open seven days a week, or whether there's some branches that are better and needed for specific hour that other branches don't have. So, I'm going to try to incorporate a lot of the memos into a motion on the budget. First, accept the mayor's June budget message and supplemental memorandum dated June 10th. I think he just wanted clarification about the Emma Prush $1 million, making sure that that first $1 million is for PRNS, so I'll include that in the motion. Include the memoranda by myself, Councilmember Foley, and Vice Mayor Jones related to library hours. Adopt recommendations 2A, 2B, 2C, and 2D from Councilmember Aranis and Carrasco's memo, with the, I think the mayor had asked for some clarifications about the involvement of nonprofits versus city staff in some of those items, and that the city manager and SJPD will have some discretion in their police staffing, but let the council know as they make those decisions whether they're changing the recommendations in the budget. Recommendation 3 from Councilmember Aranis and Carrasco with the clarifications the mayor asked for about referring to the ending fund in the general, ending fund balance in the general fund that's published in the fall, and that the, what's set aside includes not just budget, but FFNE for the new safety facilities, from Councilmember Sparza, recommendation 1A. Again, with the same caveat about some staff discretion and reporting back to council. Recommendation 1B, where they would, where staff would have to, you know, would get input from the county as the process moves forward, and use portion of the budget stabilization reserve up to $100,000 to combine with county resources for the launch of the service. And then in memorandum by Aranis, Carrasco, Davis, and Peralas, recommendations 1A and 2. Recommendation 1B, identifying what remains from budget document 10 that are not met through the direction on page 19 of the June budget message, and reallocate funding from the District Three traffic capital funding. And recommendation 1C from that memo to accept MBA 29 to authorize the removal of signage and bring back to council the policy discussion as soon as possible to council. So, that's my motion on the budget.
That's the motion? I think I heard a second from Councilmember Jimenez.
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. I didn't expect that I'd be next in line. So, the first thing I'd like to ask is that the maker of the motion, Councilmember Cohen, would you accept bifurcating, which item is it now?
Oh, yes.
The item relating to MBA 23, that is in the mayor's memo, item number three, but MBA 23.
What page?
It's the first page of the mayor's memo.
And that's because your daughter is employed by a nonprofit organization, is that right?
That's right. She, my daughter, works for one of the beneficiaries of the arts grants, so I need to recuse myself when we get to that vote, but I don't want to recuse myself on the whole budget.
Oh, okay. I'm happy to separate it for the purposes of your recusal.
Thank you. Then I'd like to also thank Jim and his staff for all of the work on this budget. It's a nice thing to have a surplus, but when you have a surplus, then you have all these, all of us coming to you and figuring out, well, how can we now spend that money? And I want to thank the mayor and the discussions we've had through the Brown Act and including us in those discussions. It's always very helpful when you can have the discussions directly with you, so I appreciate that. I also want to thank all of the departments who've been involved in crafting the budget and the, supporting the funding that we need, and the members of the public who are here to speak and advocate for their causes and their issues that are important to them. So, that's what I'm going to do for a couple of minutes, and talk about some of the things that were in my budget request, and actually take a look at the mayor's budget a little bit more. I really appreciate the funding on the disability funding, MB 16. Unfortunately, and I'm happy to consider this a second step. It's not a first step, because what we did last year was a first step. This is the second step, but we really need to go further than the disability funding that we have. I know it calls for adding a staff person, but my question for staff, and maybe, Lee, it's for you, is we really need someone to lead those efforts and not just have, not a staff person. We need to know who will be in charge of making sure that the work gets done.
So, is the question, Councilmember, who is that individual, or what is that? So, I think-
No. What's the org chart? Who's going to, you've got a staff person, what department are they in? Who will be managing them? Who will be overseeing that work?
And so, as of right now, that person's going to be within the city manager's office, typically with new services like this, or a new focus. They will reside in the city manager's office over a period of time while we kind of foster that, incubate it, and then put it into apartment. There's a very strong partnership, obviously, with our Office of Administration Policy and Government Relations and Public Works. So, Sarah Zorade and Matt Kano are going to be working on this, and then Kit Parkness, as our deputy city manager, will be spending a lot of time on this.
Okay. Great. Thank you. We would, we've been very involved in disability affairs and bringing this forward, so we'd love to be involved going forward as well. Through my budget request, I asked for several items that help fund various organizations that support members of our disability committee, community, including one that you heard from a couple of callers regarding the Cambrian Park Little League, Challenger Division Little League, where they will be able to go to participate in Little League in this summer, which is really an exciting opportunity for them. And I think it's just awesome that people of all disabilities, kids of all disabilities, can participate in sports and that we're able to help them with that. So, Mayor, thank you for supporting that. The other thing that I requested funding for that's related to disabilities is a program called Bossy Rollers, which is a program that funds adaptive physical activities for girls and boys at two of the elementary schools in my district. They have, and these are girls and boys with both, with either physical cognitive or hearing disabilities. So, it's, we're, I'm very focused on helping seniors and helping those with disabilities, and so far, I'm really thrilled to see those items being funded in the budget, but we need to do more, because while these are little things, one at a time, and are tremendously impactful on the children, we need to make sure that this city is accessible to all, and that starts with technology, it starts with accessibility on the streets, and to be, to have one staff person, that's a good start, and we may come back for more next year after we've taken a look at the one here. I also want to thank the mayor for supporting waiving senior fees at the library. I am the commissioner, the city councilperson that is a liaison for the senior commission, and that came from the senior commission that we waive fines, penalties for late fees at the, for the libraries, as we have done for our youngsters, and the mayor agreed to fund that. It's not a big-ticket item, but it is tremendously impactful and important to that, to our seniors. And also, I do appreciate that included in the motion was funding for the libraries. While I would like to see all libraries fully funded with hours restored, including Sundays, I understand that there is budget implications, and the motion on the floor is to allow the library, Jill and her team, to make decisions as to what libraries are best to open on Sundays or close those eight extra hours. So, I wanted to give a shout out to those. Also, I wanted to mention, really appreciate my councilman members' efforts in traffic safety, public safety, all the other issues around increasing enforcement in keeping our streets safe is really important, and I am grateful to support all of that. Finally, I'd just like to say about Planned Parenthood, while I'm a little bit older and not able to benefit from Planned Parenthood today, there was a day that that's where I went for my reproductive health care as well. They are very embracing, when I had no nickel to my name, they bring you in, they allow you to come in at no cost. They were kind, helpful, and I came here, my mother was in another state, so they were very helpful to me to navigate some issues that only Planned Parenthood can do, so I'm really happy to see those things in your budget as well, Mayor. Lastly, I would be remiss if I did not bring up mobile home parks. I filed a memo with Councilmember Jimenez, and I know that Councilmember Peralas filed one as well, regarding fully funding the $381,000 and change to make sure that all of those 59 mobile home parks have the designation that they need that will give all of those mobile home parks owners a peace of mind. A couple of years ago, we approved, in theory, the idea, the concept. Now, we need to do the work, and we need to commit to do the work. I know it's not in the motion. I wonder if the maker of the motion would allow a friendly amendment to include the mobile home parks up to fund all 59 to a budget of, I think it is, $381,000 for the funds to come, and I'm sure Jim, because he's very creative with finding funds, that you'll be able to find funds in the general fund. Is that, am I being too hopeful, Jim?
You may be. I'm sorry. What was the difference again?
I think it's $381,000, and it's, mayor's budget calls for 30, so it's $350,000 is different, is the difference.
Councilmember Foley, would you be receptive to hearing from either Chris Burton or Roseland about the concerns around staffing capacity? Because I think those capacity concerns are actually much bigger obstacles than the money.
Sure.
Because I really don't think it's a question of simply spending the money to make it so. We have a huge choke point right now, given our staffing right now and planning, and I think, for example, we would love to see a lot of initiatives related to affordable housing, like the Yigby efforts that, you know, we've got a church ready to go to build 100% affordable housing, and we've got a significant change in planning policy in order to enable that to happen. There's a whole lot of things that are in line, and I'd just like to hear from Chris.
Sure. No, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Chris Burton, Director of Planning, Building Code Enforcement. Yeah, absolutely. We have a significant backlog around policy work for our citywide team right now, and that's certainly a consideration. I think the proposal that's included in the June message is something that's manageable within the existing work plan. Obviously, there's costs associated with the work required, certainly around outreach and around sequel clearance, but we can see that sort of, especially given some of the major policy work around the state requirements on rezoning large areas of the city. As we look to the sort of complete body of work, that would require dedicated staffing resources to complete that project. Obviously, with a lot of the work that's going on right now relative to the housing element and some of the other policy pieces related to housing, it's a challenge to see that capacity within the department, so it would be net new capacity that we'd have to add within that context. And I think it's not just within PBCE, we'd also need support from the housing department as well. I think the $381,000 included, and that's the 2018 estimate on that number, included a hard-time development officer in the housing department as well to help facilitate a lot of that work.
I appreciated that, and I appreciate that there is a tremendous staffing issue in your department, Chris. Have you considered hiring a consultant to do the work?
Yeah. So, if the council does allocate this money for us, our approach would be to hire what we call a peak staffer, which is a non-city employee that sits with our, embedded with our staff to do the work. That's really the only way I think we could get it done. So, we have considered that, and that's probably the likely scenario that we would move towards.
Okay. So, if it was, if the budget was included, I mean, what dollar amount do you mean? The 381 came from a report at, I think, CED, that that's how many staff people you needed to hire to get it done. So, is the 381 to hire a consultant still the correct number, or is it less than that?
Yeah. So, I would say generally, we, the 381, the cost of a consultant staff person shouldn't be significantly different than a cost of a planner. So, I'd say there might be a slight variation, but I would say generally, it's in the ballpark.
Councilmember, if I can just jump into, as much I do think it is a staffing issue, it is a budgetary issue as well, in that, you know, one of the more important things in this hearing thus far is Jim reading the source and use into public comment, because what you're passing this afternoon is a balanced budget. The proposed budget was balanced. Jim and his team worked very closely with the mayor on a proposed June budget message that's balanced. So, if you're finding general fund revenues at this point in time, there needs to be an offset or a cut to meet that as well.
Okay. Thank you. And I know this is a long shot, getting this any further, but I just need to pursue it a little bit more if I could. And that is, we committed to the mobile homeowners two years ago. We haven't done anything to protect their mobile home parks. The mayor's budget calls for five. We don't know which, the five that are at risk, we don't know which five those could be. So, could we, could you commit, or how could I accomplish this, that you bring back a plan on how you're going to accomplish this within the next two years?
Councilmember Foley, could I, would you allow me to jump in? Because I think it's really important. There's an assumption made that there was a commitment, we were going to go fund and staff- staff a conversion of land use designations on 58 mobile home parks. I heard that from you, I've heard that from others as well. And I just want to check with staff, because I think that's a very, I, I know we've had a lot of discussion about this on, on council, and there's a lot of actions we've taken to protect mobile home parks. As I recall, we've had this discussion several times, and we decided, hey, we need to do all these other things that are really going to protect mobile home parks, and this work is going to back everything else up to a point that it's not feasible. At least, that's what I recall from prior discussions. And I, I don't know if, if anybody from planning staff or City Manager's Office wants to offer their perspective, but, you know, I, I went back to the 2018 memo that was written, and staff did not make any commitments of that sort. They were very clear about the fact that we should be focused on mobile home parks that are vulnerable to conversion. And I think through a combination of actions, whether it's that, you know, revising the zoning code in 2016 and 17, the, the adopting the council policy that requires the relocation and purchase assistance, the compensation to residents, the purchase price for existing mobile home, mobile homes, a relocation impact report, relocation benefits. Many of these things have made the redevelopment of mobile home parks very undesirable economically, just to put it bluntly. And, and those are the kinds of protections we pushed very hard on, and we did commit to. And then, of course, we revised general plan language, too. But maybe if I could just hear from staff, were, did we make a commitment of converting the land use designations on these 58?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, Rosalind Huey, Deputy City Manager, and as the former Director of Planning, Building and Code Enforcement, I do recall lots of discussions around the mobile home park land use designation for the parks. And Mayor, you're correct. Staff, I guess it was now two, three years ago, staff's recommendation was that we would focus on the two mobile home parks that were at great risk at the time. And those two had land use designations with a very high residential density. And that was staff recommendation. We did bring that work forward, council did approve that. So those land use designations have been made. As, as relates to the remaining mobile home parks, none of them are at high risk because any future development would require a land use designation change. In addition, Mayor, as you mentioned, the city council has put in numerous protections in for mobile home park residents, including the mobile home park conversion policy, changes to our zoning ordinance, and changes to general plan in terms of text amendments. So a number of measures have been put in place to protect mobile home park residents. And you're right, at the time, we focused on those two most at risk.
Okay, so I guess where I was going with this, Councilmember Foley, was they're going to need a land use designation change anyway, and that requires a vote of the council. And that is ultimately the protection here, which is the council. And even with an MHP land use designation on all 58, they're still going to need to go through the same step if they want to redevelop a park, that is, if a developer wanted to do so. So the question was, are we really adding much more protection by spending an enormous amount of staff energy to do this? And, and really, a question I asked after I read your memo was, you know, I went to, I think it was Michael, it might have been Chris, I can't remember, I just, I just asked, look, is there any pressure? Are you guys hearing any, any interest out there in redeveloping any of these sites? I'll just ask the question again. Have you guys heard any?
Yeah, we're not aware of any conversations that are coming through planning right now around closure of any mobile home parks.
And we are courting with the Housing Department on that issue as well, Mayor, to make sure that we're not missing anything, and there have been no inquiries to convert any mobile home parks.
Thank you, Rosalind. So anyway, thank you for allowing me to jump in. I just wanted to let you know what we were trying to figure out.
I, I appreciate that, and, and I'll let it go for now. And I appreciate all of the comments. I, I know it's a staffing issue, but I'm thinking of the peace of mind of the mobile homeowners. And if they have the protections, and Rosalind, I hear your comments too, and understand they have to come back if there's a zoning change anyway to City Council, and that's a protection. But the owners are not getting that message. So what can we do to make sure that they're able to sleep at night, that they're more comfortable knowing that this has, this, they, no one can go out and change the zoning without our approval?
Now, that's a great question, Councilmember Foley. I, I think what we can do as staff, and I'll work with Planning, Building and Code Enforcement and the Housing Department in terms of putting information together. It might be information that we can post on our website. We might take the opportunity, honestly, to convene with our mobile home park residents to make sure they have the accurate information, because I know a lot of times it's misinformation that's outspread in the community. So we will, can definitely take a look at doing that, absolutely.
Thank you. I think that would be really helpful, and that would go far with them. With that, I conclude my comments. I think I way exceeded my 10-minute time, so thank you for indulging me.
Well, I know I jumped in, so it's my fault. Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you. And just a reminder, Councilmember Foley, in person, we don't have the 10 minutes anymore, right? Yeah, so we're good.
Is that right? Is that what our rule is?
Yeah. Anyway, I, I actually wanted to follow up on that, but first I wanted-
We'll revisit that.
First, I wanted to say thank you to all the folks who've been working so hard, particularly the mayor and his team, who've been, oh, she left. I saw Mackenzie there, who've been really great, especially Jim Shannon and his whole team, answering lots of questions at weird times of day and days of the week. Also, I'd really like to thank city staff at the, having a lot of patience for the whirlwind of cost estimates and budget documents that have come through. And we all have great ideas, that then it takes a lot of work, really, frankly, to give them shape and form. And so I wanted to speak first to the memo that I submitted, which seeks to essentially align our budget planning with some of the priorities of the Santa Clara County Hate Prevention and Inclusion Task Force, which I co-chair with Supervisor Chavez. But that task force was formed by members of this council in the aftermath of the horrific Gilroy Garlic Festival shooting in 2019 that claimed the lives of three community members, two of them children. And I, along with Councilmembers Carrasco, Arenas, and Foley, former school board members, also brought forward the recommendation to join, to create a countywide task force to address hate crimes. And that was unanimously approved by the council. There's been a lot of discussion around gun legislation, but at that time, frankly, there was almost no conversation about the hate speech and the hate incidents that go much deeper than someone with a gun. There were a lot of stakeholder group meetings and listening sessions that went into the finalist of recommendations, and the full report is attached to my memo for folks that would like to read it. The consistent top priority of, of the, not just the task force, but of the listening sessions of the subgroups, was to create a non-law enforcement, non-government, really, warm line to report incidents and connect callers with resources. Frankly, we really don't understand, we don't have a grasp of the extent of hate incidents in our community, and this is an attempt to do that. And this line would be staffed by trained professionals who would be able to provide the necessary connections. And it would serve as a critical tool to allow our residents to get information and help they need from a source they can trust and be more open with. And while the county will lead this work, we need to pool our collective resources to make this happen, and many of our residents will benefit directly from this undertaking. And that's why I'm requesting up to 100,000 in funding from the city to help get this warm line up and running as soon as possible, understanding that the county is taking the lead, and frankly, is probably going to put a lot more money into this than we will. But I'm seeking to align that work. The task force has also recommended that the SJPD hire a new crime and intelligence analyst to provide real-time data relating to hate crimes, including monitoring open source social media hate groups, which we learn have a direct connotation, a direct link to hate crimes. And so this work would coordinate with the Intelligence Unit and the Crime Data Intelligence Center on specific, specific threats. And staff has indicated that this position can be prioritized as part of the adoption of MBA 41, rebuilding the San Jose Police Department, and that's why I recommended taking that approach. And so we all understand what a critical point we're at, not just as a city or a county, but as a nation, in terms of the steady rise in white supremacist extremism. Thank you to Councilmember Carrasco, who started the meeting with the adjournment that I wish we didn't have to make. And so we're seeing this rise in our country, and we, as a city, need to be prepared. So I wanted to, I'm changing gears a little bit. I wanted to touch upon library hours, the extension of library hours for library branches, particularly for those serving our lower, lower resource communities. I submitted a budget document to restore Sunday hours to Tully and Seven Trees in my district, for example, and Councilmember Davis submitted a request for Bascom and three other branches in high-need areas. And I really would like to thank the mayor for providing a thoughtful approach and to restore Sunday hours to the 13 library branches serving lower resource communities. And I wanted to talk a little bit about why that's so important, and the communities that are really impacted. Tully Library is, I believe, separate from Al-Mel-Kay, the busiest branch library in the city, and in a large part because of the community it serves. It's a very, very under-resourced community. Kids and families come from as far as Santee to use this library, and it's one of the only community amenities, frankly, they have. Similarly, the Seven Trees Library and Community Center is the primary amenity for that community, and that's why it's heavily used. Many of the families, many of the, the neighborhoods around these centers are some of the most overcrowded census tracts in the city. Multiple families under one roof, and having gone door-to-door in September with the census, I know very well that many of the homes in Seven Trees, for example, have 15 to 20 people in one home, because that's what it takes to make ends meet in Silicon Valley. So when some of us come up here and say, a park is the backyard that they don't have, and the library is the living room that these families don't have, it's, it's literal. So I just wanted to address that, because as I understand it, staff and the mayor have applied an equity lens. I don't think the mayor actually even said, do this library and not that library. I think there's an equity lens for the department to figure out. And so I wanted to point out to something before I asked a question, and Jill, if you could come up while I ask it. So as has come up many times before, is equity may not be equality. Equity is going where something is needed the most. But I acknowledge that we have branches in parts of the city that are more geographically isolated than others, and so how we define need is, you know, it, it varies. Obviously, it's usage, but we also look at other issues. And so Jill, I wanted to ask you if you could talk about the things that you go into equity, and then I have a follow-up question. Please.
Yes, thank you. Jill Born, a city librarian. The, as you mentioned, Councilmember, the, the equity index that the library employed was developed last year while we were still in a COVID pandemic response, and it, it included a number of indicators that were heavily aligned with equity around socioeconomic and need, right? So it, it included, as you know, we also had the Digital Inclusion Priority Index, so we used a lot of the same measures. It included computer usage, Wi-Fi usage, hotspot circulation, also housing and homelessness data, access to basic knowledge and information technology, and inclusiveness, as well as transportation routes, and census data related to population age and poverty or income levels. So that, we, we mostly use that. In, in library world, you know, best practices, we definitely heavily weight the equity data. The only pieces that we didn't utilize last year when we were creating this index, and in retrospect, I was, you know, sort of asking myself, why didn't we? But it was mostly because our, our data around usage, around the collections, which is a, you know, a heavy indicator for libraries, was not the same during COVID. You know, we were closed for many months, and then we had a pickup service, but really the data around usage was not there. And our focus was really around restoring services that had been cut to the neighborhoods who might need them most.
Thank you. So having said all that, I, you know, need is such an interesting thing. You grapple with it, like you just described. Pretty much the community I represent, like pings everything on every level at the, like at the top. But, you know, it, it doesn't need to be, you know, something at the expense of something else. And so what would it take to open two more Sundays, right? Because that's just two branches. What would it take to go all Sundays?
Two more branches? I think our estimate in the MBA was 328,000. Is that right? Look at me. 328,000 for two branches.
Well, she's not head librarian for nothing, right? Mayor, can I ask you a question about, you know, what was it about the number 13? Could we get to 15? And what would that take?
Yeah, usually not an ideal lucky number, but it happened to be the number in the MBA that was identified as the number of low resource libraries, obviously, I'm sorry, libraries serving low resource communities. Now, obviously, we know that many of those other libraries are also serving communities that, while we may call them high resource, have low resource families within them. So it's far from an exact science, but there is a differentiation that was used in terms of restoring the pre-pandemic hours. I'll get the number of hours wrong, I'm sure Jill will correct me, and that distinction seemed to be a sensible one, so I adopted the number 13 since that's what they used.
Okay, thank you. And Jim, is there a way that we could provide the budget, a little bit of extra budget to go along with the flexibility that my colleagues have, have, are essentially asking for?
Councilmember, yeah. Unfortunately, I mean, the, the budget for the, for the, the general fund is pretty balanced with the items that are in the, what's in the proposed budget, plus what's in the June budget message there. So, you know, at this moment, at this, at this day, you know, we would need to, to offset something else to be able to accommodate that level of expansion.
And Jill, what, what level of flexibility could you offer, maybe in terms of just hours? How could we provide you more, with more of that flexibility so that, you know, Alviso or, you know, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there, gets what it needs?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I, I've been thinking about this a lot, because I think, you know, originally, we, knowing the stressors on the budget, we had, I had thought maybe we would, we could get, you know, a handful of Sunday hours to pilot. But an investment of this size, I think that it, it would give us some flexibility to work with branches to figure out, is there a better hours scenario or hour structure that could provide coverage across communities, specifically, especially where there are more, where there's a community that has more than one branch library that serves it. So we do have cases where there are branches that are very close together, and so perhaps there's a way to adjust, modify hours so that you get coverage across the whole week, and, and really just make the most of this investment in hours, and, and try to do what you're suggesting, which is, we don't want to take away from a library to give to another, but we do want to try to get that coverage for the city in a way that- but we do want to try to get that coverage for the city in a way that honors equity, but also honors things like geographic isolation for children and seniors and that sort of thing.
Thank you. And does the direction that we give now provide that flexibility? I'd also be interested in seeing this come back to us, I don't know, maybe mid-year to just kind of get a, or N S E, to get a report back on how that usage is going forward.
Yeah, we could certainly have, and I'd take that as a referral to come back as one of our mid-year referrals to give a report on, on how the opening has conducted and the costs that have been applied.
Okay, that would be great. I don't think, do we need an amendment for that? Do we?
I don't think so. I think they've got enough flexibility. You know, I did omit one thing that I should have mentioned in response to your question, Councilor Sparta, was, you know, how did we get to thirteen? The M B A that was released previously by staff described a cost of about $2.1 million for those thirteen libraries. When Jim found some more money under the couch cushion from the revisions to, I guess, the state released new sales tax data, I think that's what it came from, the number was a little north of 1.9 million. At the time, I thought I was brilliant by cutting some things out of Jill's budget to get from 2.1 to 1.9, then later realized I wasn't that brilliant because it didn't work. But the, the thought was, we had enough ongoing money to be able to actually sustain those Sunday openings because I think, as you know, we've really whipsawed the community around library hours. The idea of having steady hours that people can rely on, parents can rely on, and children, was really important to me. So I wanted to right-size this for the ongoing money that we actually had, rather than using one-time money and, you know, pulling it back next year.
I appreciate that. I know that we've been bouncing this around for a long time, and I'm not in the budget B A with you. And so I, I was afraid we would have a lower number, so I, anyway, I'd like to, for this to come back so that we could revisit. I, I just think for the bang, for the buck, as a city, it would be great to have two more, fifteen. Make it, make it a good, good number. Lastly, I just wanted to offer some comments around mobile home park land use. So in March 2020, I remember this because there was another item, Valley Palms, that came up that same night, and that and the mobile home parks. And it was a week before, a week before the COVID announcement. So I, along with Councilmembers Jimenez, Perales, and Foley, put forward the memo to direct staff to begin work, including environmental review, to convert the general plan land use designations for the remaining fifty-six mobile home parks, and with the direction to bring those resolutions back no later than March 21. I actually pulled the text of the motion from that meeting, March 10th, 2020. And that, that was the resolution, that was the motion. And so that was supposed to come back to council in March 21st. The vote was unanimous. But as I mentioned, one week after this council meeting, we're in lockdown, the world is upside down, and our priorities changed to focus on survival, and we literally focused on keeping people alive. And so that didn't happen. I think the mayor brings up an important point, that not all parks are equal when it comes to the risk of being redeveloped, and that, yes, they would need to be rezoned, and that would have to come to the council. But I'm concerned that depending on the economic feasibility analysis, we might find that there are more than five parcels that need to be prioritized. So I was happy to see the work move forward, but a little concerned in that I didn't see a timeline for staff to return to council. And so I wanted to ask, when will staff return to council with that analysis? Is that Rosalyn or Chris or Michael? I'm not sure. I see meaningful looks.
I think that, that Chris and Michael are conferring.
They're tossing a coin. It's really what's going on. Thank you, Jill.
So, yeah, let me explain. So how that would work? So I think there's, there's sort of two issues we would, two factors we would use to sort of assess potential risk of conversion of existing mobile home parks. So one, we would only look at mobile home parks that have a residential land use designation, which is about eighty or eighty-five percent of the mobile home parks or so have a residential neighborhood or single-family land use designation. All of the ones that had a higher density designation have already been changed by council. So we would look at that, that sort of universe of, of those eighty-five percent of those mobile home parks. And then the designation in the general plan only allows single-family homes at eight dwellings to acre unless the prevailing density is higher, up to sixteen dwellings to acre. So in other words, if you have higher density development around mobile home parks, you could potentially build townhomes. Townhomes are the big moneymaker for developers. So we would look at the existing parks to understand which ones have a prevailing density that a developer could build townhomes without a general plan amendment. Then we would also look at the fiscal feasibility analysis that was done for opportunity housing that look at the feasibility of building townhomes to understand where in the city townhomes would be feasible. So we layer those two on, on top of each other to then understand which may have a greater risk of conversion and use that analysis to determine which five we would do. So I think what we, Chris and I just talked about is, you know, we, when we have the, bring the housing crisis back, we would present the findings of our analysis and present that to council.
And when is that?
It's the fall of this year. I can't tell you the exact date. Jared may text me, Ferguson, but I think it's, I think it's October, but I'm not sure the exact date. It's this fall.
And so that would come to council in October?
Yes. I am not sure it is October. I think it's October, but it's the fall of this year.
October-ish.
Yeah.
Okay. So what I was going to ask was, then could this, for example, Councilmember Foley chaired C D E, that this could come to C D E in September with what we have? Because I think it's really important for us to know how many more than fi, I don't want to know here just are five. I'd like to know how many are really at risk.
Yeah, Councilmember, so currently, the housing crisis work plan does come through C D E as a cross-reference, and then is cross-referenced to council, but we can bring this, we can add this through rules as a separate work item.
I think that would be much cleaner to have it as a separate work item and then have that come forward to C D E.
We're actually approving work plans right now, Rosalyn, so we can go ahead and add it in.
We will certainly do that, Assistant City Manager.
See how that works. And that was very convenient.
Yeah, right now, so we have to write a memo.
So we can issue that direction now? Do we have to include that with the motion, or do we have enough to go there? Okay. And so that could come to C D E in September as a separate item on that work plan. And, and also, I ask that that come, I would like to know, and I, I'm sure my colleagues would like to know, whether it's five, six, seven, eight, or more, we need to know what the level of risk is, and we need to really be transparent with our mobile home residents because I hear it out in the community. I have quite a lot of mobile home parks in my district, and for those that have them in their district, many of the folks that live there are retired, they're on fixed incomes, this is one of the things that they worry about. And so I think that would be helpful information for us to know. All right, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I also want to add my appreciation to Jim and his team, the whole budget team. I want to thank you for the good news now and also for your prudent budgets in, in all times, good times and bad. I very much appreciate that. I also want to thank the housing staff for their M B A that I requested, but thirty-six as well as P D for M B A thirty-three that I also requested. I do want to talk a little bit about the, the mayor's budget message and the support for Planned Parenthood. I, I do have to say, I, this is maybe going to sound incongruous, but I want to, want to explain, I don't support city fund dollars for Planned Parenthood. I do support Planned Parenthood and their healthcare activities, and I very much want safe healthcare to be accessible for all. That being said, I think it's really important for us to focus our spending of city funds on city services. And it's very important for us to use our limited funds where residents expect and deserve in the areas of police, fire, roads, parks and recreation, libraries, as well as our basic infrastructure. I, frankly, I was and I am upset to see that the funds are being used for Planned Parenthood when budget requests for parks and trails staffing went unfunded. With that said, there is a lot to like in this budget, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for your largely prudent budget message, as you have always done, and especially for the foot patrols that I think will help with our community policing and to deter crime in important business districts in our, all the business districts in our city. I also want to thank you for supporting many of my budget requests. I am especially excited, and I know Councilmember Esparsa talked a lot about this, about the Sunday library hours. This has been something I have talked about, I think, in every single, every single time that we've discussed the budget. It was, those Sunday hours were very important to me when I was finishing up one class that I needed before I could apply to grad school. My kids were very young at that time, and Allen Rock Library, where, which was the closest library to where we lived at the time when we were on the east side, was open on Sundays, and I was able to use that, frankly, to get away from the toddlers and be able to have a quiet place to study. And I know that it is an important resource for, for many families. And Councilmember Esparsa, you did a great job explaining why libraries and parks are so important, especially in homes that are overcrowded. I also want to thank you, Mayor, for the Hardscape Solutions to prevent encampments and to keep trails accessible to all our residents, and as well as for the, the funding for citywide fireworks. It helps deter fire risk, and I think it tamps down on the illegal private fireworks that we unfortunately have every year. I'm excited about the prospect of the police lateral transfer bonus pilot program. I had a very productive and fruitful meeting with the police department and on all of their staffing and chatting with them. We came up with that, we kind of brainstormed that idea for a bonus pilot program for lateral transfer. So I'm hoping that will be a good way for us to frankly avoid the, the need for a fourth academy every year and help us keep our staffing numbers up. And then finally, I want to keep within the ten minutes. I want to, again, thank P D for their M B A number thirty-three about the traffic enforcement unit staffing. I am extremely glad to see that there is a plan for full staffing by the end of the next budget year, which will be fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and that they've already added two additional hires since I first raised this issue with great concern in March, as well as their plan to add additional four slots to be filled this year. Again, kind of on those same veins, I want to thank you, Mayor, for adding the, the request for the funding, my request for funding for red light cameras in the budget. I'm glad that we are finally taking very seriously the number of traffic fatalities and doing everything we can. We absolutely need to continue to do that so that we can improve traffic safety in our city and reduce future fatalities on our roadways. That's it for me. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis, and thank you also for the, the good ideas around the lateral transfer bonus, particularly as I'm hearing a lot of concern. I was just talking to some folks in San Francisco. There may be some real opportunities for hiring, as we, I know, we're, we're continuing to aggressively fill vacancies here in our own police department, and I think that's a great idea. And the red light running camera idea was one that we ended up doing a pretty deep dive on after you raised it in the budget document. And I think after talking to staff, they convinced me it's, it's worth giving it a shot. So we, we certainly need to try new things because I think we're all struggling mildly for safety out there in the streets. Councilmember Peralis?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the work on the, the budget as well. I wanted to just clarify on the motion that was made from the memo that I had submitted. I wanted to see if recommendation two was included in that. And this, sorry, this was from the joint, joint memo from myself, Councilmember Carrasco, Davis, and I'd ask.
Yes, and on number two, the idea is that it, staff would make recommendations, return to council with a recommendation on how to, how to set aside that, or how to use that funding in, in that manner, but not necessarily be more prescriptive than that. But other, but yes, that, that general framework is in the motion.
Okay, yeah, I didn't catch if that was included or not. And, and I'm fine with that. That's, that's why the, the direction was what it was, but in, in sort of the, the hopes of where the direction goes, so giving staff an indication of where, you know, we would like to see it go, that's where the, in the narrative portion there or the discussion portion, it was more detailed, but I understand and recognize that, you know, we can't make that call today and that this would require coming back. And so that the actual recommendation itself, you know, would, would allow staff that opportunity to bring that discussion back. But the idea, though, in, in the discussion is certainly, for, for my purposes, that we end up having more resources on a regular basis moving forward for our arts and cultural opportunities through T O T, and especially recognizing how minimal that fund has been. I think now is the time for that conversation. The impact would be, I think, would be rather small, so we're, we're not talking about a huge impact to the general fund, and I would like to see if we could make that decision now, and that would put us in a better situation moving forward in, in our support for arts and culture here in, in the city. In regards to recommendation one B, the, the request that, that I had put in, and got back from the budget document, detailed about a hundred and fifteen thousand, just over a hundred thousand dollars or so, in improvements that came back from staff's estimates for the four corners there to, to be improved. The mayor's budget included nine thousand dollars of that, so it falls well short of, of actually getting the, the full improvements on those four corners. And the opportunity that we have is to, to get the state to partner in as well because a lot of this property, especially on two of the corners, is shared with the state. And so if, if we don't have sufficient resources, it may be difficult to get the, the state to pitch in as well. And so I do believe there could be some, some funds in D three C and C. And so I wanted to see if, if there is capacity, and this would be a question then for Jim, where we might be able to, to add to that. And I would like to get to the full funding, so about a hundred and, you know, six or so remaining to include on top of the nine thousand that the, the mayor has included in the budget. But it doesn't have to go completely there. I think any additional funding would be great, that the, the different corners were broken up. The different corners were broken up to include what it would cost to fund improvements there, the, the DG or decomposed granite, and then the, the city side where we had talked about trees, which I know the mayor was, was including majority of the funding for that. So, but I'm happy to hear from So, but I'm happy to hear from Jim and his team on, is there some additional funds we could add? And then, and I'm also happy to leave it up to staff to decide how best to allocate any additional CNC resources there, and what corners to prioritize. I certainly would like to see the corners, again, connected to one-on-one, because we have an opportunity of a partnership there with the state.
Yeah, Councilmember, this is Jim Shannon, Budget Office. So, yes, there is, I think, within, just to clarify the terminology a little bit, there's the allocation within the Traffic Capital Program for sort of traffic safety, is kind of allocated per council district, combination of building and structure construction funds and construction excise tax funds. So, in talking with Transportation Department, I think there is the current capacity, I think, within the allocation for District Three. So I think what could be considered as part of the motion today is, you know, we could reallocate that hundred and ten thousand dollars from that appropriation to this project to sort of fully fund, I think, the decomposed granite. So that would be something that the council could give direction on today.
Okay, so then just asking to make of the motion, could you include that into your motion?
My question about that, it's an, I mean, it's an important intersection to improve. My question is, maybe, I don't know who's in the room from DOT on this, but that entire interchange is slated for modernization and completely to be redone with the one-on-one Barriessa interchange improvement. So if we invest in those changes now, would that end up just being removed in three or four years when construction starts on the new interchange?
We are talking about over a decade away, though, of potential improvements there.
I mean, okay, yeah, maybe. I mean, I'm okay with that if it's a long term. I guess this question is when?
Councilmember John Rizzo, Director of Transportation, and yes, that project that you're referring to is the complex of interchanges at one-on-one Barriessa, Mayberry, and potentially Littleton Road. And yes, it's probably going to be a long time before we're able to actually get that into construction. So this is pretty minor improvement. I don't really think that that is much of a throwaway. If it's a policy and a desire of the council to actually act on that now, I don't, we don't see that as being a big deal, so.
Okay, I mean, I support it. I mean, I like the idea of fixing up that intersection. It's important to our community, so I'm happy to accept that motion if it's not a short-term throwaway.
And Councilmember Peralis, I appreciate hearing from you. If I could just jump in, the reason why, as you can imagine, we're looking for how to make all the numbers fit. And what we asked, you know, the DOT staff, and we looked at the intersection ourselves, was, hey, what does it take to really deter a lot of RVs from parking next to all the homes and creating what we knew was becoming a tense issue around, that was actually a public safety issue? And so we got the cost estimate for the trees, the signs, the striping, and so forth, and that's what that number reflects. It reflects all this stuff except for the DG, just so you understand how we got to that number.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I went out there with the beautify team as well, and we tried to have the same conversation on what would it take? The one partnership with Caltrans to then see if we could do something on either side, because it doesn't, the reason I think for us was important that we didn't just do something on our side of the fence there, connected to one-on-one, would be because simply we'd have an issue on the other side of the fence. And so we wanted to see, well, what could we do that would then allow Caltrans to potentially invest as well? And they've done this in some other areas along the freeway, where they've invested in some larger boulders to try to keep people from camping on those corners. And so our understanding was that this would be part of the requirement to do on our part. If it's not the case, though, I'm fine if it turns out that, you know, we make some investments, and we, you know, now that we have maybe say the money allocated, but yet we determine we don't need it all as we go in and make the investment, and we say, hey, you know, we don't think we need the complete DG for, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in all this area. I'm fine then at that point, then we have some savings that, you know, can be reallocated, and that we work with staff from now until, you know, next year to determine the full investment that's needed. Because I, look, if I had heard the same thing that you did, hey, we think we can do this for nine grand, and that'll help, I would, and so I think there's just somewhere where the wires are getting crossed, and where potentially, you know, you got a slightly different answer than I did. If we can at least include it the way that staff has just stated, that John has just stated, then, in my mind at least, the full allocation is there. If we don't need it all, we'll determine that over the next several months, and happy to have that money be reallocated.
That's great. So that amendment is accepted, is that right, Councilmember?
Yes.
Okay, and, that's all right. Councilmember, a minute as well. Second or, Councilmember Minus? Okay, we'll check in, he may be.
Yes, yes, that's fine, sorry.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Peralis?
Yeah, and then lastly, on MBA twenty-nine, I appreciate Nora, I was able to speak to her ahead of time as well, on the, what opportunities we had today, and appreciate that being included, at least the MBA being included in the motion today. It's a minimal dollar amount, but at least the budget can be approved, and then we can make a decision on the actual full repeal of that Muni code, you know, at a future date. I just wanted to check from staff, is that something we could agendize, say, for next week or within the next two weeks, and we can make that decision now? So then that way, advocates that we sort of said, hey, you don't need to show up today, we could then redirect them and say, hey, you know, it's going to be agendized, that discussion will be agendized in a week or two.
Thank you, Councilmember Peralis, for that question, and we can agendize it, it's up to the council for next week or the following week. It's a simple ordinance repeal, so it wouldn't take that much time for my office to prepare it, and we would just have to get it posted. So two weeks might be better than one, but that's really up to the council. And then the council will have to decide if they want to move forward with the repeal at that time.
Okay, if you're saying one week is fine, I'd prefer to go with that, but if you think two weeks is better based on the last comment you said, I'm fine with that as well. I would just like to land on the date now to include that in the recommendation, so then that way, we can go out and tell people what date they should actually show up.
I think, Councilmember, this is Lee Wilcox. We'll recommend to the Rules Committee tomorrow that that is on the June twenty-eighth agenda, twenty-first, just from a literal capacity standpoint, is pretty full. So we'll recommend that to the Rules Committee tomorrow.
Sounds good. I appreciate that, and look forward to that discussion when we can have another twenty-eight. Okay, thank you, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Arenas?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by thanking a lot of the folks who called in and voiced their priorities for our budget, especially the ones, of course, that had to do with the memos that I had written. But certainly, there was a lot of folks with some wonderful priorities, and even though I didn't write some of those memos, they didn't come from my office, I'm very supportive of generally what my colleagues have focused on this year, and really proud that as a city, we're moving together, and that this budget memo is what our city needs, and we're being responsive to it. One of the things that I wanted to acknowledge was some of the system changes that are going on with this budget. I had requested for MBA thirty-one so that PRNS could move away from a cost recovery model, and as we all know, that that's the model we defaulted to last recession, where a lot of the community centers that we operate as a city are in areas where people can't afford to pay for those services. And those community centers that couldn't have fee cost recovery model upheld in their area, well, those went under a, what we used to call a reuse program, now it's a neighborhood center program. And those are nonprofits or other agencies that run our community centers for slightly different reasons, I mean, slightly different purposes. For example, in my district, we had a community center, Welch Community Center, that was closed, and had been closed for many years, and an agency had been using it very sparingly. And then we have Meadow Fair Community Center, and Kadango provides childcare out of that site. And both of those community centers were areas where people tended to go and looked for support, looked for classes for their children, and really connection with the rest of their community. And unfortunately, those community centers are not available in that way, or at least one of them wasn't. We've now reinstated one of those, which is the Welch Community Center. I'm really happy and proud that our community has taken that back and really has owned it. We've had a distance learning happening from there, and the ROCK program, and other systems looked to us for those learning pods and relied on our framework to refer children and families there. And so that was only possible with the support that I received from you, Mayor, and as well as my colleagues, to make sure that that community center was given back to that particular community. And now we are moving into, away from fee cost recovery, which I think, in my estimation, is a huge systems change. And I just want to thank you, Mayor, for doing that, for supporting that. I think that this is part of when we talk about equity, that this is part of one of those systems that we need to make sure that we changed, and that we didn't, that our services aren't being rendered where people can pay for them, but where people and families and children actually need them. So I think this is a huge, huge deal, and I want to make sure that I say it, and I say it a couple of times, I know that we're talking a lot about just different aspects of our budget, but this, to me, is transformational, and it'll be transformational for communities that have been underserved, that are in my, some of them are in my district, but certainly they're in District Seven and District Three, and we all have one, at least maybe a couple of neighborhoods where there's been some underserving historically, or there's been some difficulties there. So anyways, I wanted to make sure that I focused on that, and that this huge systems change is celebrated and acknowledged, because it will continue to move in that direction and be responsive for our families, so thank you. The other piece is, I know our PRNS staff is receiving some real investments in some positions on an ongoing basis, and this is another way of making sure that we have some systems change as well, because when we can't retain staff, or we can't rely on certain staff to deliver programming for us, simply because we have them at a one-time basis every year, it is shaky ground. And so I want to acknowledge as well that those real investments, Mayor, as well as the work that probably had to take place with Jim Shannon, with Jennifer, with Lee, certainly, and of course, our leaders in the audience, Angel and John. And so I'm sure that there was a lot of work that needed to take place to make sure that we had those ongoing positions. And now our city will be able to rely on some of the wonderful services and events and creativity that is going to come from the staff that is now going to be permanent. And now we really can say that we're going to have Viva Gaias and Viva Parks on an ongoing basis. We did get to see this year, a lot of our district offices didn't necessarily incorporate those into their budget asks, and that was, that's also another move. And I think that that kind of delivery is what is going to create that kind of equity in delivery of services. The other area, I think we've already talked about quite a bit, and that's libraries, and obviously, I'm really supportive of our libraries. I do want us to make sure that we straddle the need and the usage just so, so that we are consistently responsive to our neighborhoods of need. The other piece, I think, I don't know that we've really talked about this, but I do want to acknowledge those huge investments in the base budget for homelessness and crime and blight. I know that there's a number of my colleagues, as well as the mayor, who has very much focused on making sure that we keep our city clean and our unhoused community supported. And so I just want to thank, thank you for that leadership and making sure that we have that as part of our base budget. Lastly, no, actually not lastly, the other thing is I wanted to say thank you to our Vice Mayor for continuing to have family-friendly improvements, especially here at City Hall, so we'll be seeing more of those breast pumping and feeding spots, so thank you. And new parents should thank Vice Mayor when they see them in the hallways. And of course, our mayor, so thank you so much for making sure that that continues to get worked on in City Hall. And then lastly, of course, thank you for including those last items on my request, on my memo with Councilmember Carrasco. You were right about the, I think it was, oh, three, item three, where it's referring to the general fund balance, and I understand that you wanted to make sure that it included the FFM's, right? FFE?
Yeah.
FFEs.
Furniture, furniture and equipment.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what the E was, so I was taking a stab at it.
It's usually all the computer equipment that drives up the cost, so, yeah.
Right, okay. And then lastly, those advocates are from YWCA typically. We heard Lindsay earlier today from YWCA, and so you heard that it was, I think, five hundred and sixty-seven percent, I mean, this is just a ridiculous number in terms of percentages for our survivors, either for sexual assault or intimate partner violence, and we've seen the result of some of those, some of those scenarios playing out in real life, and we saw that in District Four, but I know the family was from District Seven, and that is the murder-suicide of the couple with their six children witnessing that incident. And so those are, you know, obviously very high-profile examples, but this is ultimately what we want to avoid for survivors and for our children. And so having our advocates out there, ensuring some of that, some of that connection between the moment that our police officers respond and when they can get connected, to make that as short period as possible, so that they can have a successful transition if they wanted to leave that situation, as we know that when survivors leave a dangerous situation, that's when they are more likely to have a high-risk incident with their partner. And so thank you for making sure that there's an investment there, Mayor. I really appreciate that. We need to make sure that we see what the trends are. We need to make sure that we see what the trends are, what the patterns are, so that we can stay on top of what is going on with our city and the repeat offenders. And this will only facilitate the work for our detectives and for all of our units that are established to support our survivors. And so thank you so much for, for that. I, I am, I have to say that I'm, I'm disappointed in the transforming school cultures and, and not having that funded. I know from, from our high schools, you know, our high schools, obviously, our kiddos are hurting. And I think you heard Lorna Chavez earlier say that it, it's not just focusing on our chill, on our youth and figuring out what is going on with them and the culture that, that we need to make sure that we transform or at least facilitate in transformation, but that we need to also facilitate that, that culture and that environment for the adults. And I think the adults are the ones that are having just as a difficult time as our youth. One of the high schools in my district had four suicides this academic year. I know that there's a lot of other schools have multiple attempts or, or other suicides. These are not things that we, you know, typically are talking about at the kitchen table. It's not comfortable. Or fights that leave our, our youth in, in critical care. And, and that is just the symptoms of what is, is bubbling underneath. And we need folks, we are not necessarily the folks who are going to resolve it, but we need, we need other agencies that are already doing some of this work. And Californians for Justice have been doing some of this transforming the, the culture within our overfelt high school. We've seen how successful it is. I've actually, one of our, our newer members, and I say newer, within the last two years, is from Californians for Justice. And I've seen how, you know, I'm, I'm just a believer in, in the program. I'm a believer in, in being able to listen to our youth and have them come up with what they want to address versus having us decide what kinds of programs and projects we'd like for them to work on. And I think it, it is, it is something that is probably needed at every site. We don't always have the funding for it, but it would be something that I would like to continue to have considered under, under our future programming. I, I know that we always have to offer an, another program in terms of replacement. And I don't know that there is something that I can offer to, to say. Usually, we, we can look for something extra, but there isn't anything. And I don't dare to touch any of my colleagues' projects and, or any of the things that's already established, established. But, but this is something that I hope that you can consider as, as our youth are desperately needing us now and not when they are in critical care or when we have to visit the parents who just lost their child. So, I think it's, it's time for us to make sure that we invest in our youth in a way that makes sense to them, regardless of whether we think it makes sense to us. So, that, those are my comments. I think I answered the questions that you had, Mayor, regarding my memo.
But thank you. And I appreciate the concerns you raised, Councilmember Renes. And I certainly don't discount the, the intensity, the need at all of our high schools for what you described. I, I think, obviously, we're, we're trying to juggle a lot of competing budget documents for the same pot of money. And, and as I looked at this one, the concern for me, obviously, we're trying to manage a change in culture right now at the city, which is a heavy task and requires a lot of resources. Paying for a consultant to do that in another organization where we don't actually manage any of the outcomes, we can't actually ensure that they'll necessarily follow through on whatever the consultant recommends. And, and I think, I, I don't know that, I don't know how the superintendent or the principal feel about us doing that. And so, you know, I know that Jill and her team has always been very deferential to the needs that the educators themselves articulate within, you know. And, and so I, I reached out to her and just said, are we hearing this from superintendents right now? I hadn't heard a principal or superintendent there tell me this is something they needed. We hadn't heard that from the city. And, and so I, I just think when we're working across agencies, it's just much harder to try to get to that change. And I, I think, obviously, we're investing a lot in here, in the city. We're going to learn a lot through our own transformation, I suspect. And, and I didn't want to be presumption, presumptuous by believing the city could somehow or another manage that transformation in another agency or another school.
Right, no, there was already a conversation with the Eastside Superintendent, and they were absolutely, you know, excited about this possibility. Like I said, they have this program in other high schools, so they know the results that they produce. And I think you've heard from our, our, what is it, our city schools collaborative in the past. You've heard them say, maybe it's not articulated in a very, in this very specific manner, but I think it's articulated in a way that they are looking to us for some of those enrichment activities, for some of those engaging activities that they may not have the time or resources to do. And I know our teachers are, you know, exhausted, everybody's exhausted. And so to ask our teachers to do just one more thing is, is difficult. And so the, 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 the opportunity here is for an agency to come in, and they work really closely with the school districts. That is actually one of the requirements is to work, is to have this very close relationship. If the, the school is not invested in it, it, then it's not going to work. But, but I, I, I see where the disconnect might be, that this is just something out there floating on its own and it's not part of a greater plan. And, and maybe this is something that I can just take back to our youth and master plan, although I wanted it to be very specific to my district and what I heard and what I knew was happening in the high schools in, in our backyard. And so this is what the essential services are. It's not meant for, you know, citywide. It was just very specific for, for our high schools.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cohen, you had your hand up. Did you want to modify the motion in some way before I go to Councilman Cross? I know she's been very patient.
Yeah, actually, the only reason I raised my hand was because after Councilmember Foley talked about her bifurcation, it occurred to me that there's a small item on page 23 promoting business and entertainment districts. My brother was recently hired as Creative Director at Create TV. So, I should probably separate that item out as well, so we can vote on that separately, so I can recuse myself from that item.
Okay, one more thing to, to, to vote on.
So, that's just a change of my motion there.
So, we'll bifurcate those two items. So, then we'll, we'll take up the, the mass of the budget document first, and then we'll go to those two smaller items, so everybody can vote. Councilmember Crossco.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I won't, I won't take up much of the council's time, so that we can get to the vote. I just wanted to thank the entire team, of course, Jim and his team and city managers team as well, and, and all your folks, Mayor. And it's been said already, a lot of great stuff in this budget. Of course, not, not all of the stuff that I wanted in there is in there, but I understand. There's, there's not an endless fountain of funds. And, but I do want to point out a couple of things. On the east side of San Jose, there is, there are facilities that are dilapidated and that need a lot of TLC. And some of the documents that came back when I was asking for, for an assessment from our, from our city staff, came back in the millions and actually really quite surprised us in terms of what it would take to, to just bring them back to, to a more acceptable terms. Emma Push being one of them, Pal Stadium being another. We wanted to see what some of our buildings that are being used quite a bit. And as we know, especially during the pandemic, and I believe Councilmember Sparza really, really, I think, painted a, a beautiful picture. Some of these buildings are the living rooms to our, our families and the backyards to our families. And, and I think that for, for a lot of us who serve these families, we, we, we might sound like a broken record to the rest of the city, to staff, and maybe to our council colleagues, and maybe to the audience that's listening to us. But, but these are our neighbors, and these are the residents of the city of San Jose. And, and it is a, a story, a city of two tales. And, and so we, we simply are up here repeating ourselves because it's worth repeating and it's worth reminding everybody. And when we're fighting for the budget, we're, we're simply trying to get those services and resources out to individuals who just simply don't have enough for their children in order to, to compete in a very competitive market. And, and for our families, as they're trying to recover from the pandemic, I mean, pre-COVID was tough enough. During COVID has been brutal. And post, kind of post-COVID, I guess, I don't know if it's post-COVID or not, as our numbers are starting to go up again. But, but it's, it's, it's really posing a challenge for a lot of these families. And so, so we, we just keep repeating ourselves. And just as we feel that we're starting to gain some momentum, you know, something, there's just something else that, that it gets thrown into, into the mix. And so, so as we were doing an inventory of, of the district, you know, one thing that we found pretty remarkable is that the facilities are really being put to use. And that's a beautiful thing. Emma Push Park on any given day is just, it's filled with laughter and, and children and farm animals and lots of chickens. Some of them are our chickens, some of them are the neighborhood's chickens. Some of them are just dropped off, I don't know where they come from. But, but you know, you, you go over Highway 101 and 680, and that iconic barn is really a beautiful sight to see. And to think of it being lit up during the holidays or late in the evening and seeing it as you're crossing over those bridges, we just want to be able to have something that, that says you've arrived to the beautiful east side of San Jose. And maybe some folks who have some other beautiful landmarks in their district might not think that that barn is really beautiful. But for those of us who live on the east side, we love seeing that barn as we're driving over the, over the highway. It's really a sense of pride. And our residents are really feeling that sense of pride, that sense of placemaking, if you will. And so, so to see what it's going to cost us to upgrade or to improve, it, it's startling. And I think what it is, is it's just been, there's been a lot of deferred maintenance. And so we have to come up with a plan. And I don't anticipate that, that if I make a, a friendly amendment, that it's going to be accepted and that we're going to suddenly shift $20 million over to Emma Push Park. So, I'm not going to, I'm not going to put us through that painful, you know, decline if I do a friendly amendment. So, I won't, I won't put the, the maker of the motion through that. But I just want to be able to state that, that at some point, we have to really come up with a strategic plan to save our, our very limited assets that serves half of the city on the east side. And when I say the east side, I don't mean District Five. I mean, you know, that's District Seven, that's a good portion of District Eight, that's a good portion of District Three. And for Emma Push Park and for even Alum Rock Park, those are regional parks. And Cunningham Park as well. I, I've gotten to know Cunningham Park very well because I, I run through there. But we have to, we have to come up with a plan because our folks are using it. And Cunningham Park doesn't smell great, by the way. Emma Push Park needs a great deal of investment. Pal is not just a regional park, but, you know, you have folks that are just coming in from everywhere. And so these are our assets that need a lot of TLC. But I will, I will, I am going to ask staff to help me out with something real fast in my last few minutes. I, I put forward a document that did not get funded, and that was a strategic plan for our senior services. And as we were coming out of COVID lockdown, what I found was quite alarming. And that was that we were not providing the same quality and care for our seniors on the east side as what I saw happening throughout the rest of the city. And what I was hoping was to be able to have a strategic plan for the entire city, not just the east side, but an entire city that would be uniformed and that would provide services that would bring our seniors out of isolation and that would give them the kind of dignity and respect that our seniors deserve in their golden years. And so the document came back as 394,000 for an administrator and two FTEs, which also include $100,000 for a strategic plan. And so if I could get an understanding maybe from John Sisarelli or, or, or someone else that might be able to answer this, with all of the different positions that we have right now currently open, why are we allocating additional funding when I think that we can move employees around, you know, and, and actually bring that cost down? I think really the only cost of that 394 would be that $100,000 for the strategic plan.
So, just really quickly, John Sisarelli can answer the, the questions around that budget document and the costs associated with it. However, even with the existing FTEs in the department, Councilmember, if those are to be shifted and spent on new services, you still need to offset that. And that is a, a vote of the council to go ahead and move those services out of something and into something new.
But even, even though they're within the same department as PR and S, and supposedly we're, we're providing senior services anyway, aren't we? What I'm looking for is a strategic plan because there is no, no uniform strategic plan currently. And as a result, we have a lot of seniors that are being left out.
I'll jump in. John Sisarelli, Director, Park Recreation and Neighborhood Services. Thank you, Councilmember, for the, for the questions and wanting to advance this work. You know, I would, I never want to say no to new, to new resources. Every program we have, whether it's senior, youth, or anything, needs more resources, that's for sure. I think, well, certainly on the idea of taking existing vacancies and shifting them into this work, that means taking away from other senior services, even though those positions might be vacant now. Just like our other programs, you know, we're not fully staffed in any of them, so everything's stretched very thin. I'm not sure that that's the best strategy moving forward because that means we give up something else down the road, some other service that we're already obligated to provide. I will say, though, that, you know, we do have an age-friendly report that we do every year in the fall to NSE. That's connected to the World Health Organization. And they have their eight domains of livability, you know, which include many of the things I think you're concerned about, whether that's being active or involved, whether that's transportation, whether that's language access. All of those things are earmarks that we are focused on and trying to improve on. Clearly, you know, as we all know, the pandemic really sideswiped us when it came to senior services. This, the senior services have been the hardest services to bring back because they are a vulnerable population. You know, next month, we were trying to get to all in-person dining. But as we reviewed it last week and talked to the Senior Commission, we decided we're, the, the group is just not ready for this just yet. So, we're still going to be in a hybrid food model where you can elect to come in in person, but you can also take a box. And that varies widely. And that varies widely, um, depending on the community. Um, some community centers have a lot of people dining in person now as seniors and some have almost none. Um, and so part of the problem, I think, is that coming out of the pandemic, we've not yet rebuilt to even where we were before. Um, so we, we don't really know the full breadth of what we're able to do yet. Um, and I think this work would, would align well if, um, we had a little, a, a little more time to not only just staff up, but get the seniors back in. There's a lot of programming we aren't doing across the board that we've done in the past. And we have some teams that say, hey, we want to do more of this stuff. We want to have dances, we want to have movie nights. And there's some things like, I, I'm still just going to pick up a box lunch and I'm not even going to walk into the community center. We're trying to walk that tightrope with them to figure out when can we get them all in together because that meal, that senior nutrition meal is sort of that spark for us that, that we program around a lot. And because now we have you in person, so we want to make sure you're socializing too, or maybe you're getting exercise or doing a craft or art or something that you're interested in. And so our intent, um, is to, with our current staffing model, um, to make sure that we're engaging each of those senior communities at each of our community centers and talking to them about how best to rebuild our senior programming for them through their eyes and for the needs that they have and they want from us within our, within our budget and our limits. So it's really meant to be a much more inclusive process moving forward. We're sort of taking the opportunity, the fact that we haven't been able to do much of that programming. Now we're starting to begin doing that program again, so let's do that together with them. And I think we could then report out on our age-friendly, we're, we're an age-friendly city. So in the fall, when we report out to NSC, we report out about, well, how far have we come? And then I think that's a good time to have that discussion about, is a strategic plan needed for seniors? Or do we feel like we're moving in the right direction and, and we're increasingly providing the services that they need? So that would sort of be my alternate suggestion to this, is give it a little more time because we just haven't been able to rebuild it yet.
Uh, a, and when is that report, uh, coming to NSC?
It comes in the fall, typically, I think, like October, give or take. I'd have to look at the NSC work plan. I don't remember exactly where it landed, which month, but it would be this fall.
Yeah, uh, I, I, I agree with you that, um, that this is, uh, you know, they're, they're, they're not children. So this is, uh, this is a program that should be rebuilt with them. Uh, I will tell you that, um, you know, I haven't been to, uh, Almeda Valley except to observe, so I haven't spoken to them. I haven't spoken to the seniors at Evergreen. I've spoken to the seniors on the east side of San Jose. And the seniors on the east side of San Jose are asking for specific things, uh, and they, they don't feel that they're being heard. And they don't feel that they're being taken into account. And that's, that's the issue, uh, that I'm trying to bring to your attention repeatedly. Uh, and so, uh, so, you know, I hosted, uh, uh, an event for them where there was over 80 seniors ready to dance. And that's what they're asking for. And as I look at the calendar and the lineup of events, there's not one single zumba, aerobics, line dance, uh, uh, or evening dance for them, not one. Even though they've been asking for it repeatedly and for months, by the way, for months since February. And yet still nothing. And yet I look at the other centers and there's line dancing level one, two, and three in the other centers. So when you say that they should be taken into account, I agree with you a hundred percent. But yet they still aren't being heard. So how do we rectify that? Because the schedule's out and yet again, springs come and gone. Now the summer schedules come and gone. And yet two cycles now of schedules and still they are not being heard. And so I agree with your philosophy, I'm with you a hundred percent, and still their voices aren't reflected in that. And so the reason why I bring up the strategic plan, John, is because of this. Because they keep voicing it and it's still not reflected.
I, I appreciate the comments and I think maybe we just need to do a better job at talking with the seniors because we are doing that kind of programming. We are doing that at all our community centers. I know the one you're most concerned about is Mayfair, but I can tell you there's 17 different programs for Mayfair during the month of June.
I'm looking at it right now, there's not one single dance element.
Well, again, we're in a transition going from nothing to something, so not everything all comes back at once. There's no community center in this city that is doing every single program it was doing before the pandemic, not a one.
I understand that. I, I understand that. And, and I, but I will tell you, the one thing that they've asked for repeatedly, repeatedly, is a dance element. And now two cycles have gone by, both spring and summer, and still not one dance element, not one.
But we do have some dances planned. We have, and we have a way to do it with, uh, we're going to try to engage the local high school, um, to bring, you know, some, we have a lot of seniors that are women, that are single, you know, sadly their partners have passed on. But they still like to dance and they want someone to dance with. Um, and so our deputy, our new deputy there had, had done a program in South County, bringing, bringing in those young teenagers to come in and just have fun and dance. So that's one of the programs that's going to come to Mayfair, um, for those seniors who want to dance. So I think, you know, I know, I know we've been meeting with them as recently as just last week to talk through the programming and the events coming up for the summer. I feel like we're getting to a good place with the folks at Mayfair. So I think probably we just need to be a bit better coordinated about what we're talking about and what we're planning. And I'm happy to get that information to you.
That, that would be great. I'll go ahead and, uh, table, uh, again, uh, the strategic plan. Uh, and look forward to, uh, to, uh, seeing, uh, the report to NSC. But I will say the following, this is maybe the fourth or fifth time that I bring this up, uh, publicly, uh, at NSC, at CED, uh, several times at, uh, council, now at the budget meeting. Um, and, and it's getting better for sure. Uh, but, uh, I, I keep reporting back what my staff and I are hearing from our seniors. Uh, we're having to host different events in order to fill the gaps. Uh, and I'm hoping that, that, uh, staff is listening to what we're hearing as well and providing those opportunities. Cause I'm, I'm right there with you in terms of listening to them and providing what they want, not what we want, but what they want. And, um, and still, like I said, two, two, uh, schedules later, I still don't see it. And so come fall scheduling, I hope that this doesn't repeat itself. Uh, it would be, uh, you know, uh, kind of crazy making if, if yet a third schedule comes out without the things that they want. And so, uh, so I'll, I'll leave it at that. And, and I think that, uh, having Marco Hernandez there is going to be great. Um, I've had a great relationship with him over the seven and a half years that I've been on council. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Councilmember Sparza, for letting us know that, uh, I don't have a time limit. So I'm, I'm gonna go long. That's right.
Actually, I, I don't think that's been verified. I know Henry is looking up the rules as we speak and he and his crack team of attorneys will be getting back right to it shortly.
Okay, okay, I, I won't go long then, how's that? Uh, I want to, first of all, acknowledge and, and, uh, recognize Jim and your whole team for the, um, outstanding, outstanding job that you do putting the budget together. This is my, uh, eighth and final year of being involved with this process. And I'm not going to tell you I'm, I'm going to miss it, but I do have an appreciation for, for all you, that you do and all the hard work. Uh, I also, uh, want to thank the mayor. I feel that the budget that you presented was balanced, it hit all the right notes, and it was spot on in terms of the things that are most important to the city. So I want to acknowledge you on that. And I also want to thank you for including several of the items that, uh, I proposed. I didn't get everything I wanted. I kind of got greedy, but I did get a lot, and a lot of important things around public safety and particularly around, uh, supporting small businesses and minority businesses. So I want to, um, also acknowledge Jennifer McGuire and Sarah Zerate. Uh, and Sarah Zerate for the, um,
You just got away?
For the,
Can we ask anybody, everybody to mute, uh, mute please online? Thank you.
For all the hard work they, they did on, um, moving forward with, uh, getting our disparity study, uh, moved, uh, through to the county and actually getting a signed agreement with the consultant that the county had hired to do this, to the disparity study and also provide the funding for that study. But particularly, I want to recognize and acknowledge, acknowledge Jennifer Chang, Deputy Director of Finance, who moved mountains to get it done. So it's just a testament to, to our staff and what they're able to do. Because as we all know, sometimes it can be challenging to work with the county and make things happen, but they were able to do it. And I just want to, again, acknowledge them and thank them for all the hard work in moving this forward because it's another step towards creating opportunities, particularly for small and minority businesses with the ultimate objective of creating wealth in the community. So I just want to, uh, thank everyone and that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, and I appreciate very much your praise for the budget team, as many others have echoed. Um, Bonnie and Jim and everybody do incredible work, um, and very grateful for that. I, I, just as a closing statement, I, I, I know that there have been some concerns raised in just the last couple of days and saw an op-ed in the Merck News today by several people I respect greatly. Concerned about a lack of investment in prevention, um, investment in at-risk youth, um, from the city. And for those who, who might be watching, uh, who are concerned about that in particular, I, I think I can say with some confidence, we've never invested more money, um, in youth, and prevention programs, serving our most vulnerable children and, and youth and young adults. And I say that in part because we had the benefit of some of the federal money that, um, I know that Councilman Raines and other colleagues were very strongly pushing for the 10 and a half million dollars that we're spending on, uh, childcare, on, uh, tutoring, on mental, physical health screenings and family support grants. And, uh, you know, particularly the childcare piece, I know is so essential for so many families. After-school programs, we're expanding San Jose Learns, summer and after-school. Appreciate all the great work that Jill and their team do on that effort. Um, we're investing almost $20 million in, over the last two years, last year and this year, on resilience corps and employing young adults overwhelmingly who are, are coming from, uh, zip codes. They're below median income. And they, those young people are doing incredible work in supporting our city in so many ways against all the challenges of wildfires and droughts and pandemics, uh, and helping kids with learning loss. And, and they're doing amazing work, but that's a very big investment. Uh, we're continuing to push on, on San Jose Works and employing thousands of, uh, young adults and teens, uh, particularly in summer jobs. We've fundraised nearly $10 million now for San Jose Aspires. We'll be expanding, uh, that program, micro scholarships for, for first-generation high school students to get to college and beyond. Of course, we've gotten a $6.7 million for all the best agencies and the city programs. The Mayor's Game Prevention Task Force. A million and a half ongoing now is committed for Project Hope, uh, efforts in nine different neighborhoods. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for launching, uh, and pushing for that program to be created, I guess, what, seven or eight years ago? Um, and we're restoring library services on Sundays for 13 libraries serving our highest-need neighborhoods. In addition to $800,000 now coming to support recommendations out of the RIPS Task Force. So I, I don't want folks to think that by looking at a narrow category and a narrow line item of the budget, in this case, that I think they were looking at best funding, that was specifically allocated for those non-pro, nonprofits. That's all we're spending. And I just named a few of the items, I didn't exhaustively name all of them. I, I think it's clear that, that we are investing significantly. At the same time, we're not investing nearly enough because we all know the needs are far greater than the dollars we can invest. And so, uh, and it's important for us to recognize, uh, we're making some progress at least in, in getting programs or having real impact out there on the streets in our neighborhoods. But we're going to have to keep doing this. And, uh, it's, that, that work's never going to be done because we know our kids need more. Uh, I just don't want people walking away thinking somehow or another we're making choices and choosing cops over youth programs. I think that's a false choice. I think our residents want both. They want more officers, walking patrols, et cetera, and they want investments in our, in our children. And I appreciate this council really being cognizant that we, we need to do both. And that's what we're trying to do here. All right, uh, I think we said it all. Uh, I'll just check the Zoom screen to make sure I didn't leave anyone out. Let's vote first on the budget message from the motion from Councilmember Cohen, second one from Councilmember Menes, on everything except for, um, the items mentioned by Councilmembers Foley and Cohen, for which they're going to need to recuse themselves. So that'll be the first motion we vote on.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Corrales?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, now, Councilmember Foley is stepping out right now as we speak. So we're going to now vote on the portion of the budget relating to, I'm sorry, can somebody remind me? It's on, it's an arts, uh, nonprofit.
It was MBA 23, I think, was separate. And there was an item for, I think, Small Business Advisory Committee, those were the two items, I think.
Okay, MBA number 23, is everybody agree that's, that's what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay. And that's part of Councilmember Cohen's motion, of course. So let's vote on that now.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Corrales?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, now, Councilmember Cohen's going to turn off his screen now. Uh, and we're going to need a motion as to the Create TV, uh, allocation.
So move, second.
Second.
Okay, and Jim, maybe could you just describe that since I probably would get it wrong? If you happen to know. Yeah, is somebody else that has it? Page 23? Okay.
The $21,000, uh, allocation to Create TV on page 23 of the budget message.
Okay, so that, that is, uh, Vice Mayor Jones's motion, is that right, Vice Mayor? All right, let's vote on that now.
Is Councilmember Foley also recused from this one?
Oh, no, I should probably go get her, I'll, I'll fetch her. I can't get in back there.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Corrales?
Yes.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Sparza? Sparza? Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Um, we're now on to item 3.4, which is approval of the operating capital budgets for the city San Jose and schedule of fees and charges, which of course are modified by the June message that we just approved. Let's go first to the public, Mr. Beekman.
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman here. Uh, thanks for all the work from everyone on the last item. Uh, you know, I could have mentioned, I, I, to, to better say from the last item to this item, I think that can be applicable as well. And to really, uh, thank yourselves for the words of, uh, councilperson Carrasco in the last item, who's, who's really looking for a citywide inclusive way to talk about senior issues in this era of COVID. Thank you for that. Uh, I, I thought, you know, with this fee, ideas of fees and, and, and in terms like that, uh, to, to, to better clarify the idea of the future of, uh, Uh, I I thought, you know, with this fee, ideas of fees and 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 in terms like that, uh to 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 better clarify the idea of the future of uh there needs to be, I think, a a a baseline of ser- of equity services that we all need to agree on as a whole city process. I think we're working on that. And, you know, the senior item brought up in the last item, uh, you know, is indicative of that. Uh, good luck how you can work on that. I think it's a way to bring around a whole community effort and uh really, really discuss the ideas of equity together and create the ideas of cooperation and long-lasting items of cooperation. So good luck how you work on uh this, a sort of baseline of racial equity services that can really organize ourselves at this time and we can all have a good understanding together of what can be good uh equity and racial equity ideas. Racial equity doesn't have to be divisive and I think we're at the time to figure it out, figure that out and how it can be cooperative, inclusive for all of us. Thank you.
Catherine?
Um, I'm sorry, I raised my hand at the wrong time. I'm not sure what this, what the current issue is.
Back to council.
Okay, uh, let's, we'll consider a motion on this, at this, this is again three point four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Mahan. Looking online to see if there are any comments or questions from my colleagues, I don't see any, so let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Corrales?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Asparza? Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That was impressive, we, in about sixty seconds, we approved five point three billion dollars of spending. Uh, it's pretty efficient. Okay, um, I'd like to take a break at this time, I'm told uh this is the designated moment and we'll return uh at six o'clock. Looking around here to see if, all right, I guess that's what we're doing. Uh, we'll be back at six o'clock to resume the remainder of our agenda. Thank you, everybody, for your patience.